All right, it's nine oh two, we're gonna open the meeting. Adams County Board of Supervisors, Mr. Gray, would you give us the indication?
So, Father, here's, oh heavenly gracious, Father, we thank you in the morning, oh God, for allowing us to see another day. Father, we just thank you, oh God, for allowing us to attend this board here. And, Father, we just ask, oh God, that you continue to bless our elected officials, Father. Father, continue to keep them from any hurt or harm or anything, Father. Continue to give them wisdom from our eyes. Father, continue to let them work together, oh God. And, Father, we just ask, oh God, that we pray for this community. We pray for the businesses. We pray for our first responders. We pray for our schools, our teachers, our nurses and our doctors, oh God. And, Father, we just ask, oh God, that you continue to find faith, oh God, here in Adams County. And, Father, we just pray for this state and we pray for this country. Father, continue to uplift our leaders, oh God, and, Father, continue to strengthen them and keep them from any hurt or harm or danger. And, Father, we just continue to pray for our businesses and all the finances here in Adams County. And, Father, we just continue to pray for peace, oh God, and a one nation, oh God. And, Father, we just ask, oh God, that you continue to strengthen our county workers, oh God, and protect them as they go out today. And, Father, just keep them safe, oh God. And, Father, we just ask, oh God, any potential business coming to Adams County, Father, just let us find faith, oh God. And, Father, we just ask, oh God, we pray to your personal Jesus, man. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I need a motion to approve the docket.
President.
President? Okay, you want to roll call, Mr. Gray. All right, Mr. Gray.
Present.
Ms. Hutchins is here but on a phone call, I understand? Mr. Gaines?
Present.
Mr. Middleton?
Present.
Paige Dean?
Present.
Randy Lewis?
Present.
Mr. Slower?
Present.
Ms. Washington?
Present.
And I'm here. Now can I have a motion? For the docket?
So.
Moved by Mr. Gray. Taken by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion?
Father, Mr. President, uh, Scott and Randy Lewis, this sixty thousand going to Adams. Is that part of the money we supposed to be loaning them?
You say the airport?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that could be that, there's several different things we're trying to do. But one of them is...
Father, will you approve it, so we can make sure?
You want to set that aside until it's approved by the...
Uh, Wes, could you, help us out, do you think that's for...
Yes, maybe when I got here, I thought it was part of the money we loaned on the hangar bill. I don't know.
There's several different names, but we'll find out which one it is.
We'll make the motion, uh...
This, this has appropriation to the mayor's board.
Appropriation? What is for? This is my first time seeing that amount.
Let me see if I can get my paper link to pull up, pull up the actual...
All right, well, uh, finish, you want to finish that upon review or just make the motion carry on, on review?
Uh, I'm gonna make the motion, I'm just gonna take it out until we figure out what's going on.
All right, we'll come back to, uh, approving the docket then. Old South Winery? All right, if you don't mind giving your name and address. Fred, the podium?
Yes, sir.
And, uh, Scott, do you have any information or do I have it?
I've actually talked to him, I, I have the information, and I'm actually gonna talk with the ABC. They think they're giving a bad, bad funds.
My name's Scott Galbert, well, good morning first of all, and thanks for having me. My name's Scott Galbert, I live at one hundred six North Meadow here in Memphis, Mississippi. And I own the Old South Winery. And my parents started the winery forty-five years ago. And I had three of my sons work there full-time with me. And they decided we wanna carry on the tradition, so I, um, I said, well, I have to expand the business. And so I bought a piece of property, gave a handout on the back of it, there's a piece of paper, I bought a piece of property out of sixty-one across from the driver's license place and between Christie Chevron and the Pepsi Company. And I found out, I was, the plans are we're gonna build a vineyard, build a new winery, and it'd be a nice place for closing up the town where our local folks and tourists could get to, because it's real close to Memphis. And they can see the grapes growing, it's a big, really neat place. And so about twelve days ago, I found out the Mississippi ABC does not allow, um, people in the county to have a license unless it's a qualified resort area. And I didn't know that, so...
You're not, you're not the only one. Jackie brought this to me when I came to the bank the other day, so I, I didn't know who, who he was, but I, and then I got it to Scott. Uh, and said the mayor had to approve it, or, and I saw Ricky's head pop up, he's like, whoa, wait a minute, we're in county here. But, and that's exactly what my response was too, is the board of supervisors to make that decision, so, uh...
Yeah, and I disagreed with what he's being told by the ABC. Yesterday was a holiday, so I wasn't able to get with the ABC, uh, if you were a wine manufacturer, native wine manufacturers in that particular statute, that you can be able to serve customers at your winery. So I'm kinda confused why he would need double those, but nonetheless, I asked him to come here and be on the docket because I felt like the board would want to know they're expanding and God questions and so forth, what's going on, so I could keep you impressed of it. Now, I'm certainly gonna talk to the ABC and make sure...
Can we go ahead and, uh, make a motion to approve this?
I figured we would...
That we approve it and we're not gonna stand in their way?
Well, I figured, hey, make a presentation to the board, the board had any questions, and the board can give me what we need to do, whatever we need to do, if that's the pleasure of the board.
Yeah, okay, you can continue if you have some more, uh, I just, I wanted everybody to know what, why you were up there.
Well, if y'all have any questions for me, we happy to answer them, I mean...
We, we certainly appreciate the fact that you're moving but staying in, in, in the county and trying to, trying to grow your business.
Oh, we love, we love this, this is our community.
Yeah.
This is our home. Anybody in the area?
I, I feel the same way.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'm gonna make a motion to, uh, Scott, what does motion need to be?
I'm not sure if we can approve the resort status, but I'm sure it's appropriate, but I'd want this board to be comfortable with it to let us approve, you know, work with them to get their approval.
Will I make that motion?
So, all right, motion by Mr. Gray, second by Mr. Middleton. Any more discussion?
Mr. President, let me say this, uh, I really didn't know what, uh...
Work with them in any way we can to get...
This place was until I was in New Jersey or somewhere, and I was talking to somebody about, uh, my, um, I had to get a shot in it, and they say, you need to try these pills, New You. And I'm like, okay, I'll try them. I said, where can I get them from? And then she googled it, she said, well, it's in your hometown. The winery, I'm like, New You pills? Mustard C pills, whatever the case may be. And I'm not trying to sell no New You pills, but I promise you, once I got on the New You pills, I never had a shot in my own since. And, uh, I, I, I just don't think, uh, this board never been in the business of, uh, stopping somebody from expanding their business, so, uh, I think y'all have our support. And as long as Scott do whatever you gotta do to make sure that whatever they need to do is legal, I don't think we have a problem with it.
All right, Mr. Gaines?
Yeah, I'll say I like, you know, we do support it.
He drank wine, man.
As a matter of fact, I can see how Hammond got something, I can't, his, his father, um, I used to work on the vehicle, I used to work for Don Mitch out at Natchez RV Center. And I actually got two bottles of wine that he gave me, I had never opened them, I got them right now, that his father that gave me. And he was a real nice man, and I used to do a lot of, uh, his work on his, on his vehicle, 'cause then he said, come on back here, and he gave me that wine. And, and that had to be ten or eleven, I still ha, I still got those bottles of wine, they had never been opened right now. But we, but we, we do, uh, we do encourage the expansion, you know, I'm glad to see business is coming and, um, you know, I know it's different in the city and the county, but we do have a lot of county property that's, uh, like you said, it's not located that far from the city, so it's kinda, uh, passing through. And I wish we could see a few more businesses expand toward the county, but we definitely, I, I, you have my support. I yield the floor to Mr. Gray.
Mr. Middleton?
I just want to thank y'all for y'all's commitment to Adams County. And congratulate you and your family on your future growth, and know that this board will support you any way we can.
Uh, Ms. Hutchins?
The wine drinker.
Yeah, yeah, let me tell you, I still have a whole lot of bottles of your wine. Uh, 'cause I like mustard dimes, you know, I got a fence full of mustard dimes, if you want to purchase them, I just joke. But, uh, anyway, I support you, and anything I can do to help you all, I'm here to do it, because I do purchase you all wine. And I love to come get it out for Christmas too.
All right, um, Mr. Galbert, we'll do nothing to impede what you're trying to do, and, and thank y'all for coming today. I said y'all are a rough-looking crowd, apparently you're, you're working, working men like we are.
That's right.
That's okay. Uh, thank you for coming, and, uh, uh, I need a vote. What y'all? All right. As have it, no nays. Approved. Do you want me to sign, do I need to sign this, or you're just waiting on it?
I'm not sure what we're gonna do.
Okay, but we will not stand in your way though, so anything y'all need, if you need our help, call one of us.
Me, thank you.
All right. Thank y'all.
Y'all worked it, can we roll?
Yes, you can. Thank y'all for coming. County business, uh, Nick Boone? Okay, uh, county business, Kegon McLean, Adams Energy? Hey, Keywan. Keywan, okay, I knew I said that wrong. And I knew I had to get corrected.
There you go. Uh, I'm the operations supervisor here for Adams Energy in Natchez area, along with my manager David Skinner, Luke Jackson, and our engineer, uh, Greg Williams. We came on behalf, may I ask us to come to share the information going with the Morgantown Road project?
Yes.
Mr. Jones, uh, it started with Mr. Jones putting the article in the paper about we, I'm cooperative. And so we met with the mayor, I think Mr. Gray, Mr. Gaines was on our conference call, and we, um, and we, uh, decided to get our contractor to go out and, uh, spot, um, to that, that, uh, Mr. Jones, for that process.
How you doing?
In the process of the drainage, and we had a deal, twenty-seven hundred dollars, uh, to do that. And we just came to just say that that job is happening completely, we had spotted all those parts, and we spotted, uh, that project.
Okay. Your head?
Yeah, I just kinda, uh, I bet boy, he came in before, we had, like you said, we had a, kinda, a discussion on Morgantown Road, uh, two foe. Uh, one of them was to deal with the utilities that's located, and the other one was trying to plan phase two to keep, uh, Morgantown moving forward. And, um, we think that it was, um, a, a very, very, um, probably nice price to meet us, was it probably about twenty, said twenty-seven hundred dollars. And, uh, we had to approve on this side, and the mayor and the city had to approve on their side, so, uh, they asked them to come in, but we appreciate it. We enjoy working with them, because, you know, Morgantown has been a nightmare. And, uh, we're trying to prevent as much as we can, uh, know the engineer, uh, contractor, uh, we got utilities, but I appreciate everyone coming together and working, trying to get this project completed, so, in that same, um, after that speech, I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-seven hundred dollar payment, which the city would be paying anyway. It has to come out, have to be approved here.
Okay, motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Gray. Any discussion?
Mr. President, let me say this, uh, in the near future, 'cause I know there's gonna be many projects that we gonna do in the county, and I think it's very, very important that everybody be at the table on the front end and probably, look, you need to take some of these problems we having right now, because we, we had this engineer, then we had a different engineer, then I don't know, Adams and, and Energy and everybody who's at the table, uh, at the beginning of the project to, to let them understand that po, it's, it's a possibility that they might have to relocate some lines, whatever the case may be. But that's my only say, let everybody be at the table at the beginning of the project, instead of the end of the project.
We, we understand a lot of the problems, I mean, most of those lines were put in before all of us were born. They're, they're sixty, seventy years older better probably, so I don't know how anybody knows where all that stuff is. So, I, I know it's, it's hard for him digging out there, and it's certainly hard for y'all to keep coming out there and trying to find where all this stuff is and who did what from that long ago.
Mr. Wilson, uh, it was a major issue, I'm gonna step aside, that, that the engineer was over project, sharing that.
Yes, okay.
Yes, I do, um, yeah, we, we were, I think, in cooperation with the city, and I had quite a few discussions with Mr. George Jones regarding the details. We, we okayed our line, uh, to basically be under all the drainage, and we had found out that our contractor has more than two shells, so we're having to make some adjustments, but we're, our goal from this, this day forward is to work with, uh, the, the, Mr. Jones out there, and get everything out of the way, so they, they can deal with they out there, with, with, uh, the drainage work. And we've had a lot of discussions with the mayor, and, uh, I think we're in good shape going forward here. Actually, I know there's a lot of other utilities that's in, that you deal with also, that we wanna make sure the progress gets, I mean, the project gets done as quickly as possible, and we're gonna work here as helpful as that.
All right, thank you.
My name is David Skinner, I'm the operations manager, and I kinda love seeing Natchez. Keywan does a great job down here, by the way. But I do wanna say this, uh, Mr. Gray made a very important point, uh, pre-construction meetings are very much needed. And I know there were some changes made to this project that we wasn't aware of, but, uh, that's no excuse. We're gonna be a corporate community partner here in Adams County, and not just, uh, Adams is a company that we're gonna get along with all the communities that we serve, and we wanna just thank you for letting us be a partner, Steve.
No, thank you. Thank y'all for coming, yes.
Mr. President, for care of this, and so, you know, and I appreciate that, and, uh, as you can see, uh, we are all on the same page. So from this point forward, I definitely need to make sure, and we all need to make sure, when something happens, everybody need to be at the table. And I, don't get me wrong, I definitely appreciate the mayor for stepping in and working on, on trying to get it coordinated, but we need everybody at the table, 'cause as you can see, before anything could be moving forward, we have to prove, approve a payment just like the city, and we are working a project together, so the path is the path. And more, as we move toward the future, to finish this project, to help the community, help the neighbors, uh, we gonna try to have more collaborative efforts to make sure that this thing go out smoothly until it's completed. And I appreciate what y'all have done for the constituents of Adams County in both, uh, political, I mean, the city and county government.
Thank you, sir.
Did, uh, did y'all bring an invoice, or is it, is the city guy?
The contractor haven't gave me the invoice yet, but just assumed I'd get it out.
They go through the city.
Okay, well, okay, all right, need to carry the motion, all in favor? Uh, any nays? Motion carries. Okay, we're gonna pay our part. Okay, thank y'all for coming today, you know, being transparent about it, appreciate it. Fred Parker? Okay. We're gonna move on. Uh, city government business, if any? Any city, city government? Do we have any city government, Scott?
Well, our city government being, Mr. President, is, uh, what happened before, we was just gonna, uh, bring the board and the community aware that we did have a, a meeting on Morgantown, uh, trying to work out some hiccup unforeseen, uh, interruptions that we probably thought that would be there for utilities, like, I mean, you just kind of signed it up. It, Morgantown was definitely probably for, in us was born, and utilities were put down, so we, uh, did look forward to that, but we, on the next thing that we'll be looking forward on our part to approve the engineer and moving forward plan, as, uh, we talked about, came to agreement on, we was gonna try to use, uh, replace existing drainage with, and give the engineer for, going forward, the, um, go ahead to start on a new plan, and that was gonna be, um, repaving, uh, leveling and repaving the road and fixing it existing drainage on that part, and that way it probably wouldn't, uh, might be a little less costly and a little more time consuming, so I wanted to bring the board up to date, uh, and I guess, uh, if we wanna do enough, we could wait till Mr. Ford come up, bringing his report.
Well, that's the next thing, so if he gonna come on up and make a report while we're talking about it?
And, um, and when he makes his, finish his report, then I'll make a motion, give him the, uh, go ahead to move forward with the plan.
Well, I really just have updates, they're moving forward construction on phase two. Um, and then we're gonna get back on to the phase one, uh, they're planning, they were planning on starting construction on the EWP for Lofton Lane tomorrow, we did give them a notice to proceed on the nineteenth. I'm not sure whether, whether, whether it's gonna prevent that start for tomorrow or not, but we still planning to be on site tomorrow for EWP zero, C zero four four, and that's for Lofton Lane, Brooklyn Drive and Churchill, uh, road. And then we're just waiting on the right of ways for C zero four five, which is, uh, highway eight four, sites one and two, King's Road, Barf Bayou, and then it's with this car wash. Um, and we're still finalizing design for the road. Uh, and that's all the updates I have.
All right. Well, I'd like to make a motion to him to proceed with the plans for phase one.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Gaines, second. By Mr. Gray. Any discussion? Rob, you got anything?
No, I got something else.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Uh, Morgantown Road.
Uh, yeah, I want this board to be aware, I know y'all probably got the email, that, uh, we are asking for additional funds from our congressional, uh, local, state people and the federal government, so we are asking for additional funds.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor? Uh, any nays? Motion carries. Yes, sir.
The last thing I have is the contract for C zero four four needs to be signed by the board president. I'm responsible for this organization, so as our board president, we sign the contractors' contracts for C zero four four, so they can be being constructed.
That's on the Lofton Lane? Okay. Need a motion?
Say.
Moved by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Any nays? Motion carries. Want to move, David? All right, here's the board.
Any questions for?
I do.
Go ahead.
I had this in my report, but I'll go on and say it now, uh, before you leave. Um, it's some other EWP projects, the Kerry Road and the Morel Luther King Project. We probably need to go ahead and start and make an application for those two projects as the funds, or at least. No, they, I think they released, um, they...
We don't hold here, and I don't know if they released it.
I think that, that got kicked off.
All right.
Yeah.
I do have a question for Mr. Ford. Go ahead. Um, Burke Road Bridge, y'all went down and surveyed it and put the mark, me and supervisor Middleton went down the other day, uh, and looked at it. So looking at the survey, when you pull up to it where the pipe gate bridge, I mean, the, uh, fence is, you got three sets of marks here, so the furthest mark is the furthest corner of our right away. Okay, as long as we stay within that, with that temporary bridge, we're fine. All right. Moving that pipe fencing off, I mean, the board give us permission to start, go ahead and put the temporary bridge, we're having so much trouble with this one, uh, as long as we stay within what you got marked. And then across the creek, you had two, and then you had one alone, about there by itself, just a survey mark out in the woods out there, one just by itself, and then Mr. Middleton couldn't figure out which way, or what it was represented, or whatever it stood there.
It could be a control point.
Okay.
It could be a control, it was just out.
All right.
It could be just a, anything to shake this part is controlled.
Just out there by itself, that's probably what it was.
Yeah, and nothing followed, it's John, yeah.
But, uh, we stayed within that outer mark, we were in our right way. That's what I need to know.
So, do you need, do you need anything else?
Well, from the board, I just need to make sure that we're okay to go ahead and remove that fence and start removing those trees and put the temporary bridge in. If we good on your end, and then Mr. Slower will be good on your end.
Are we good to move what needs to be moved in our, in our right way to put the temporary bridge in?
The temporary bridge, we're okay.
Okay.
We got permission from everybody, the problem for releasing the federal money is they want, the state wants a fifty-year permit. So right now, we're under a permission to put it in there, and they always give us permission every time we have to do that.
I just wanna make sure, me and Mr. Middleton, we went down last weekend, looked at it, but we're just unsure of something tomorrow.
Or Wednesday, or Wednesday, excuse me, so...
Get your defense.
In their trail, I mean, it's, it's a major problem.
Okay. So, we only have motion for that, we, we're good?
No, we're good.
Okay.
One more thing, equipment road, you don't redesign any, put the pipe in, when do you think that would be ready for being, or when would that be?
Well, we gotta do the right of service.
That's what I'm saying.
So we do what we gotta, then we go hard to start a tool, we plan we could fix the cement for, for our, our workers, you know.
And the way I understand it, that last site, we can re, reapply again for that one. So I give you two on that, thank you.
All right, do you have anything else?
That's all there.
All right. Thank, thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Before you move on, uh, I got the information about the sixty thousand dollars on, uh, for the half court, so, uh, I'm gonna make the motion that we approve the docket.
Okay. Who was the second on that?
I was.
Second, Middleton. Okay. Any more discussion?
It's just saying that it will be deducted monthly a refund to the county, and they have to reverse by the federal aviation administration.
All in...
Reimbursement from the FDA.
All in favor? Uh, any nays? Motion carries. Okay, parliamentary courts, please ladies. Parliament reports, please ladies. You can, you can come ahead, Sam.
Good morning, board.
Hey.
Sam, my official service officer from town.
Yes.
Uh, I don't have anything you can bring to you this week, uh, any new business or anything, or everything is, uh, with the veterans proceeding, uh, well. That's all unless y'all have any questions for me.
Well, I know you, Mr. President, I know you got a lot of, uh, funding, uh, you ain't getting nothing cut, did you?
We, we still know you.
Okay. Thank you.
That's why I said I didn't have enough, knew of it, it's still waiting. But, uh, we are expecting training to be cut, due to be there, so, just, just in, uh, hoping to see what they gonna do.
Alright, thank you.
Good morning, board.
Morning, how you?
I just have three routine raises to cook for y'all. Uh, first one is Jasmine Relling due to her, uh, time in service of county, her, her due pay raise is gonna be thirteen fifty.
Hold on a second, let me try to find that.
I got copies of all of them.
Oh, you must have everything then, I don't see anything in, in my, you have with you?
I got the, the payment, the form and all of that.
Okay, I'll need it.
Alright, and, uh, also Kimberly Singleton, same thing, time in service, raises.
Okay. I need, I need them before me, so I can call them after.
Okay. And, uh, and the final one that you're currently mentioning is something, plus, I, I remember.
Mr. President, he's dead for six months, uh, or what?
No, that's, uh, that's people up in here. Well, well, one of them is for six months because he's only been in my department that long. And, uh, the rest of these are eighteen months, two, these other two.
So is it in your budget?
Yeah. Okay, yeah.
How you doing, Dave?
Alright, how you doing? And you just go ahead and keep those, I got copies.
Okay. Uh, first one is Kimberly Singleton.
Just now, sorry.
Oh, good. I already laid thirteen fifty, twenty eight thousand eighty. Second one is, uh, Jasmine Miller, thirteen fifty, twenty eight thousand eighty.
H R hasn't signed it?
Jakari. You haven't got these to H R at all?
No, I have some, they got it to H R first, three, and that's in there, so if we don't raise someone's salary, then we don't give.
That was sent to her, uh, last week, uh, all of those. And, uh, I don't know.
Couldn't, uh, carry them over there, maybe, uh?
Try these over here.
Okay.
Y'all even take them down?
But she, he's gonna let you see it, shock you.
No, she can sign, she don't have to sign, H R.
She can get them too. And they'll get them back to us, and maybe we can get it taken care of in a little while.
Okay.
We are on tier, with that right? Each tier, they could, uh, increase?
Yes.
If we approve that, that tier.
So, that's gonna take a minute, we'll let somebody else go, and then we'll get you back up here in a minute.
Okay, alright, y'all have a good day. Well.
You need to wait, Rob.
Yes, sir.
Good morning. Can we present this travel information to you, and I have some more that was just signed, just, just a few minutes ago, uh, by the judge, we're requesting travel to Kissimmee, Florida. Uh, there'll be six of us traveling, uh, myself, Coordinator Woods, both the case managers, uh, one circuit judge, and one assistant district attorney. And it's for the N A D C P conference, the National Conference, yearly conference.
And where is it at?
Kissimmee, Florida.
Okay, so if I say anything like Kissimmee, Florida?
Right, and I just, we got some new, uh, some additional orders signed this morning that I have to give to y'all on that.
No, this is reimbursement, right?
How many of them was it?
Uh, six.
Okay.
Those additional ones are timed this morning.
They're, they're not including in the six?
No, they shouldn't be. That's reimbursements, uh, for airlines and hotels.
Let me see what I have, any work, what I don't have. Okay, I've got Carmen, uh, Brooks.
Yeah, that's good.
Going to Kissimmee. Uh, got, uh, Cassandra Woods.
Yes.
Joseph Bellion.
Yes.
Fran Gines.
Yes.
Duchess Crater.
Yes.
Okay. Who am I missing there?
Should be one for Lisa Dow.
Alright, need a motion? Moved by Ms. Hutchins. Seconded by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Any needs, motion carries.
Do you want me to hold on to these until after y'all return from your trip? For the reimbursement? For the reimbursement?
No, he's going, so now.
We can't until you come back, on reimbursement.
Yeah, you can, yeah.
You need a travel.
It's better if you do reimbursement, not advance for. Oh, I'll, I'll do it.
What's the problem?
I'll, I'll talk to you after it. It's better if you do reimbursement than you do advance.
Say, what happened?
It's in our county, county house.
How can it possibly be a reimbursement?
They need to show the proof, is that what?
Do the reimbursement on meals.
Okay, we'll wait on reimbursement, how about the flights and, um?
That's an advance.
Yeah, that's an advance.
That's a good advance.
Because we've already paid.
Huh?
We've already paid.
Yeah, you can give the reimbursement.
Is that in there?
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
It's just like, when, I guess, when we go to DC, then we run through the docket, and then we get reimbursed, and we have to charge it on our credit card, and that's what you say?
Yes, I feel that, but I was hoping for the travel voucher.
So how do you add those, uh, Scott?
Okay, he, he's gonna talk to the judge and find out what we need to do. Um, on that, because we usually have to just wait a couple of weeks before we get our money back.
Okay, and the second thing that I wanted to ask about was the opioid money that the county's received. Uh, I think last time when I was here, I asked for fifty thousand dollars, and I found out that, um, there was actually more than that in the account of the judge's request that we asked for half of what is in the account for the adult intervention court. So we proposed a budget, I mean, a budget request, increase request form, uh, for seventy two thousand.
I, 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 I mean, at this point, we hadn't made a decision on, on if we, it, well, I think we need to wait till we get all the requests in for whoever want part of that money, and then if we can determine how we gonna distribute the money to whoever. That's just my opinion, uh, uh, y'all say y'all want half, and then you could, and whoever else come before us and say they want some money. I just think we need to wait till we get all the requests in, and then we determine how we gonna distribute the money. That's just my opinion.
Yes, because we've heard from, you're representing, um, Judge Drake and Blackwell, and then we got Judge Brown and.
I do have my request today as well.
And you have a request, so, but.
I think they all need to be submitted to the county administrator. And let her bring it to us.
We, we would rather have a specific amount, rather than just saying I want half.
Yeah.
I, I could, I did what a dollar amount.
If it was fifty thousand?
Seventy.
No, no, no.
But you, but you found out how much the money was, and now they can have.
Twenty, two thou.
Yeah. Submitted to the county administrator, let the county administrator send an email.
Brandy and the county administrator, and both the judges have said bye.
It has been submitted to you all, okay, she has a request too.
And Brown, I think that Judge Brown is gonna submit, but, or you represent Brown and, okay.
I have that today.
Okay. Alright, is there anything else on your side? Okay. Thank you. Alright, thank y'all.
Good morning, Mary P. Ward, uh, county courts. Um, if I in your, um, folder there, I have two requests for travel. These are, um, for TFLs to attend the, uh, training in Kissimmee, Florida, National Conference. This is to pay the registration, which has to be paid for before she goes, this is an advance request. Registration, the hotel check, and parking is a hundred dollars, which we got that in there, and then her mileage they are driving. Her and Hollis Hunt.
Alright, down Hollis Hunt.
TFLs is the other.
Can't be, can't be too far away.
And who's driving?
TFLs.
Okay. That, that's only two?
Correct.
Okay. Any motion? Moved by Mr. Middleton.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? Any needs? Motion carries.
My next request is, uh, the budget increase request form, which I have completed and turned into, uh, Ms. Washington. And, uh, the request for the opioid, um, settlement funds. We are requesting for youth court, we have two programs, we have a youth juvenile drug intervention court, and we have a family intervention court. So we are asking for twenty five thousand per, uh, program. Total fifty.
Twenty five thousand each?
Yes, sir. To pay for treatment, it's all in my request form, just what we're gonna use the money for is to pay for treatment, uh, psychologicals, things that is not covered under the grant money that we receive.
And, and who's got those?
She's got two.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Gray, on your point, um, it seems like we could probably give them the two, twenty five thousand, give them the fifty thousand, even though they want seventy two, or, or is there, or is there somebody else?
Turned into Stephanie, and Stephanie also has items that she wants to include in her budget too, to help us pay solid on these programs.
Yeah, that's why I don't wanna give all the money.
We don't know how much we have yet, because we haven't gone through that process.
Okay. We, we got them, and we're, we're gonna, we're gonna consider it, and, and it's gonna take a little bit more time.
I understand.
Okay.
We just want what are requested.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all I have to say.
Okay.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, uh, Mr. Upshaw? Okay.
Sir.
Like, you're not that hard to see, ever. Okay, we've got the, uh, well, it's, the shirt is what I was actually talking about. It wasn't a, it wasn't any kind of joke. Alright, Mr. Upshaw, we, we got the signed forms, so, uh, I need a motion for authorization, um, for Jakari Winston, um, for pay increase, Jasmine Miller, and Kimberly Singleton.
Salute.
Okay, got a move by Mr. Gaines, and, uh, seconded by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any, any needs, motion carries.
Mr., uh, is, uh, Washington, you keeping up with all the, all the, all the?
Um, not necessarily.
Huh?
Not necessarily. Um, with the request that he have, um, I don't, I can't, I would have to check to see it where his budget is right now. Um, I don't know if that was.
My question was, was you keeping up with all the requests that they want for, and, and then once we leave out the meeting, you can go check, that's what I'm asking.
Okay, Mr. Upshaw, is there anything else? Your good go then.
Alright.
Thank you, sir. Um, I, I'm gonna get Fred Parker, I'm sorry. I'm gonna get Fred up here, because I called you a minute ago, and, uh, you aren't here yet.
Someone had asked me a question about the, this past season.
Is that some updates from last meeting, or Washington?
I'm sorry?
Last meeting, or something?
No, no, this is. And I forgot to keep myself a page, I apologize.
Actually, I think that was. Somebody gave theirs away.
Okay. Uh, this morning, I'd like to go over a couple of the issues on our health insurance, I'm still tweaking my quote. This page I'm handing you is the actual check register from Unit degree, showing several things. On the first page, you see under amount, four hundred fifty one thousand nine hundred and eleven dollars. Those are funds that at this point in time have been sent back to the county for claims over these specific deductible of fifty thousand dollars. On the second page, you'll see, uh, total TPA claims paid. That's the total amount of claims from four twenty four through January thirty first, I believe, uh, of one million, I can't see anymore, fellas, one million six hundred twenty four thousand, that's a chance. That's what Blue Cross is paid at. If you keep going to the right, pending, these are claims that are in the to be paid bucket. Four hundred thirty eight thousand dollars.
To be paid?
To be paid. These are claims that, as you know, Unit degree doesn't just get a claim and then ship the money out. They have doctors and nurses, et cetera, that make sure, hey, this is valid, this is where you're at. Uh, all the way over to the far right reserves, this is the amount of money that Unit degree is holding in reserve because they expect the claims to reach by the end of this policy period, about a million dollars, that they pay back to the county. Why did I go over this? I wanted to go over it because of the challenge that this renewal faces. Some more information, uh, due to claims. The fixed costs are fixed, they're what they are. Claims are what they are. You can't hide from a claim. This group has a lot of sick people. Costs per employee per month in April, it was eight thirty five of seven. And at the end of January, it was a thousand, over a thousand and sixty six dollars. This means claims are increasing.
That's your claim cost?
I'm sorry?
That's just your cost of claims?
Yes.
Not your fixed cost?
No. Okay. And total fixed cost, six hundred forty six thousand eight four, and that includes Blue Cross, Unit degree, et cetera. So, I wanted to go over those with you, because it, it is challenging. I know, uh, y'all were trying to get another quote, and, uh, I would ask, since I'm an incumbent agent, that I be giving the last look when we do get another quote in. That's common practice, and if this board would accept that, I would. And if this board would accept that, I would ask for it.
Well, I, I certainly appreciate the fact that you're in town and we, I can drive to your office and hand you something that I'm concerned about. And you always take care of it. You've always taken care of our stuff since, since I've been here and apparently way before. So I like the hometown service.
I like, yeah, I like to say too, that I would like him to be able to get all the other quotes too, because it may be something in there that he can see that we don't know.
And also, if I may interrupt, if I get, uh, Ricky called me, pardon me, superintendent, I mean, supervisor, right, superintendent, gives us high money. Uh, I love Ricky, I feel like I.
We, we go way back.
That's right. Uh, Ricky called me one day, this is probably been four or five years ago. He said, "Are you afraid of competition?" Now, y'all know the fact that I played football in music school at Southern University, a slat school, a white guy in a music room. I am not afraid of competition. So, but it was a bound quest, Mr. Gray, which I've been known, Mr. Gray, I'm not. I feel like what any other agent in the state can offer, the county, I can offer also. So that's not an issue. Now, all that being said, uh, there are a couple of other issues that I need to speak about that require executive session. One, because it, uh, is about a specific employee, and one is about, and I forget how to phrase this, a, uh,
We'll do a close determination.
I'm sorry?
We can do a close determination.
A close, a close determination.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll, I'll be here.
Alright, Fred, thank you. Sorry to cut you off a minute ago.
That's okay, good morning.
You stopped again, I'm sorry.
Good morning, Lennox Smith, Southwest, Mississippi, Pennsylvania, Denver. I have three items, um, for board approval. The first, I would like the board to consider, uh, reapplying for Adams Regional Authority's Critical Infrastructure Fund on a Morgantown Road project. We were requesting two million. I would like permission to reapply for that project.
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Gray. Seconded by Mr. Gaines.
And Ms. Page has the reservation.
Any discussion?
Discussion. Ms., uh, Smith, uh, oh, at the previous meeting that we had, is are the requirements that you, uh, put new industry in the area for the grant, I'm just trying to.
No, that, it's not a requirement, although they, they would like to see the industry, but as long as.
It's not required.
It's not required, no sir.
Okay, I hear the form, Mr. President.
Okay.
They, they do request, and I've spoken with Supervisor Gray as well and Unit 23, um, the representatives, I have, I do have loads of support for the project, uh, from the school system as well as Congressman Thompson. But any kind of residents or businesses that's affected by this project are needed. Any kind of letters, um, they can be handwritten, we spoke about petitions, things like that, those are, are needed.
Yeah, well, that's why. I text you, when I text, I found out, it was also brought up in the meeting that we had, if we could, uh, because they was gonna move forward with writing a petition, and, uh, because they were saying some people might not write it up, and we can still, uh, generate a petition for the area Morgantown and allow people to sign it, and then, uh, inform some people that might be capable, able to, uh, that wouldn't mind that they write something for us also. Alright?
Uh, we probably get one from, like, a couple of churches out there, because a lot of elderly people don't wanna travel, it's raining down that road. It's already bad anyway. And at nighttime, they don't wanna come at all.
Right.
Uh, because there's no way to even see the road.
Correct.
Okay. Anything else in discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any names? Motion carry.
Thank you. The second item I have, the application for the cap loan for the, uh, Chesapeake and Ballastville renovations for the restroom and locker room project. Uh, the application is complete. I'm ready to submit. I just need, um, the request is for the four hundred eighty-seven thousand eight hundred fifty dollars. That was the amount of the request for the twenty-year term for the cap loan. These funds are from, uh, Mississippi Development Authority. So I just need board approval, uh, to submit the application and for your president's signature. So.
Seconded by Ms. Hutchins, seconded by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any names? Motion carry.
Thank you. Lastly, under the second appropriations for the ARCA Home Improvement Project under Adams County, for supervisors, I have, uh, material invoices from contractor for two applicants under Supervisor Hutchins District, one for West Middleton's District, and one for Gaines, and one for Supervisor Gray's District. I need approval to pay the material invoices to the contractor.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, moved by Mr. Gray, seconded by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, motion carry.
Great, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you.
I got a question. Did that other family, did my district call you?
No, no sir.
I seen you. I thought I sent it to you.
No sir. Uh, I have some for you. Uh, the Wildlife and Fishery Grant is coming up in the Stewby Ave for the first. I think Supervisor Gaines made out something that he may like to submit, lay forward on the Wildlife and Fishery Grant. Mm-hmm. That's a recreational trail. Right.
Yeah. Uh, if we can write as well, I'll have to actually get an estimate. You know, we had, previously, we have been trying to get, uh, a top on the arena, um, out at Fox Mountain. I know you applied for one through USDA, something like last year, summer, we talked about it. But I would like to, um, get permission to apply for, uh, that grant. And I, uh, have been actually working to try to get an estimate on what it would cost.
I do not believe that's an eligible item, under the recreational trail.
I did, okay.
But I, I'll, I'll look into it.
I just, uh, looking to it because I think unless I had some wrong information at the conference, uh, that, uh, I was informed that, that probably would be covered under the grant.
Okay, I will.
Uh, uh, when we was at the conference here a couple of weeks ago, they said that they will cover that, and I would like to, uh, if it's, uh, I, I, I'd like to make a motion that she be able to apply for a pending that, uh, at least the eligibility, and that's in the form of a motion.
Uh-huh.
I see.
Moved by Mr. Gaines. Seconded by Ms. Hutchins.
That is an eighty-twenty match.
Okay. We'll figure if we can. We'll figure it out.
We have to have a fundraiser.
We'll figure it out. But if we'll.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any names? Motion carry.
Ms. Smith, if you can also give us a list of what can be applied under that grant.
Sure, sure.
And I'll have something to you in the next couple of days, about five, my side. I got a couple out there.
Good morning.
Morning, Ms. Smith.
Ms. Smith, Adams County, Eden Outlaw, this is. Giving a list of calls for February first through the eighteenth. Adams County S O at three oh seven, National P B at five ten, National Fire Department at two. Also, uh, I wanna discuss the fencing for the new building. We picked out the lowest quote. Also, the, uh, the name, talk to the guy with the fencing company, he's gonna come up and discuss that as well. He's requesting three installment payments for nine thousand and two hundred sixty-nine dollars and twenty-three cents.
What's the total amount? It's nine thousand?
The total amount is twenty-seven thousand eight hundred seven dollars and cents.
How many quotes did he get?
We got, we got two quotes.
Okay.
But Whacker, the prices went up again on him, so he's gonna give us another quote on that before we even get approved. We're gonna get another quote from him, but this was a cheap quote.
Okay.
So she's gonna, when she come up, she's gonna talk about it, uh, she's gonna get approval for the three installment.
You say you are gonna get another quote?
Yes, Whacker's gonna give us another one, but it's gonna be higher than the original quote, since the last quote, he said the price went up. He's supposed to give it to you today.
That's odd, the prices are still going up, anything.
And then who is that contractor?
This one here is, um, National Fence, he's from Whackers, Louisiana.
How, how high is this fence and what's it consist of, what is it made of?
Okay, this fence is gonna, uh, it's gonna be a commercial wire fence with the wires on, the barbed wire on top, and it's gonna have two gates. One of them's gonna have a cold home and the other one's just gonna open in here through that. So they're gonna connect to the fences already there, because on one side it has fencing, they're gonna connect to that fence and put the wires on top.
Okay. How tall is it? Must be eight or nine feet, then? I don't know, barbed wire on it?
Yeah, six foot. Get the barb on. Yeah. The name on it.
How many feet of fencing is that?
Four hundred eighty-nine. Three to six foot, commercial heavy wire and pipe barbed wire on top.
Twenty-seven thousand dollars. Yeah, I see. I think we need to put it out for another bid. Can we do another bid on it?
Yes. Yes, it's a good question.
But, I just.
It wasn't a?
Well, that's. Written quote, you don't have to advertise anything?
Oh, you don't? Okay, written quote, okay.
Could you, could you give me the, uh, specifics on what the fencing is, so I can?
This is pretty bad.
Okay. Are you, were you through, Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is this just a regular fence?
Was first great, uh, fence with barbed wire on it for security and a, 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 a gate for cars to pass through? Is it gonna have two pads, one for the cars coming in, one for the employees?
One pad and two gates. Where you put pad in to get in the gate, and they got the other one in case you got dick first or something, they gonna be coming in with it on the side, it's on the other end of field. One, if it's getting an interest, it'll be on the other end of field, and you just go out and have heat back.
Okay. Ah, yes. Shot that around just a little bit. Okay, uh, go ahead.
Um, good morning, main court service clerk for Adams County. Would like to spread procurement car and travel car for January fourth and minute for food.
Moved by Ms. Hutchins.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any names? Motion carries.
That's all I have. We cleared up everything on the, um, on the fencing, so we're just gonna get another quote, that was all the thing that I had on here.
Okay.
And show you what the, uh, the last vehicle that we have. I got, so the one that was damaged with the wreck, because we're replacing the vehicle for the shared department. We got a quote from, um, Enterprise, and they said it was on state contract, but I was trying to find them on that they gave you on state contract, but I really can't find it specifically one, uh, what they're seeing. So I have several ones from state contract that we can look over and see which one we're gonna go with. And that's basically all I have.
Alright. How old was Cory all told?
Uh, the latest one was two thousand twenty-two.
Latest?
That's the, the, the one that was on Highway eighty-four that she's speaking of.
Yeah.
Was, uh, two thousand twenty-two.
Did we get any money back?
So that money comes back into the general fund? From when the insurance pays?
I, I believe that's correct.
We know how much that was?
Around thirty-three thousand.
I asked him for the deficiency, he never responded to that, if there was a deficiency.
Sure. Have you been sitting here the whole time?
Been here the whole time.
I hope that, I felt very curious.
I'm so glad you said that about it. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Brown.
Good morning, County Bureau Clerk, Deputy Director of Emergency Management. On Friday, Saturday, February fifteenth, we had, uh, notification from National Weather Service around four o'clock that Adams County would be under severe weather threats, uh, thunderstorms, and the impact would start around eight P M to last until midnight. Therefore, we opened the safe room and we activated the E O C. During the course of the opening of the safe room, we had twenty-two residents. The result of the storm, there was one tree down on a home on Nine Pine View. We provided them with tarts. There was also several trees down, and as of ten thirteen, that P M that night, there were five hundred and fifty outages reported by energy customers and sixteen hundred outages reported by Southwest, giving a total of two thousand one hundred and fifty outages prior to us closing the safe room and deactivating the E O C, which was at ten thirty. We would like to thank the road department, Adams County Sheriff Department, and Eden Outlaw One for their efforts in helping us, uh, during this time. We also expect to possibly open the safe room for upcoming cold weather this weekend. Are there any questions?
Y'all having any trouble? Y'all have to serve meals and what have you, or?
No, sir. We did have snacks available and beverages, but we didn't have to provide meals. We opened at six and shut down at ten thirty.
Thank you.
Oh, the boss said we weren't allowed.
Okay, that's my snack, okay.
We have a favor.
Okay.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Just make a quick search.
Another thing else I, I wanted to say, because you all had questions about some volunteers. I have a, uh, a meeting coming up, a neighborhood watch meeting coming up next week, and I will be asking for volunteers for you all. Thank you very much.
Our mail reports, who's next? Bixman, you wanna go?
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Contrustition, Adams County Tower, and antenna permit process. I have one request today, it's from Verizon. Uh, they need a permit to place additional equipment on an existing American Tower Corporation site located at seven thirty-three Highway sixty on the south. This permit will include replacement of nine antennas, nine remote radio units, two hybrid cables and associated equipment, removal of three antennas, three remote radio units, and two coaxial connectors. Placement of this additional equipment will be brought into service along sixty-one South Corridor, uh, proportions of Southern Adams County. Orders and requirements have been met and fees paid. I request the board approve this Verizon permit application.
Moved by Mr. Middleton.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No names? Motion carry.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Related to this?
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Good morning, Board. I have a reference, Adams County Tower, for a lead. Uh, we got two things. Uh, first one is we need to, I know I forget Dr. Delaney's orders on the, uh, fire hydrants. We have those two hydrants that we need to go and get installed, we're gonna be on Miller Road. Uh, that hydrant station will be a three-inch PVC, and you're on Miller Road and Dunbar Road. Uh, that hydrant station will be a three inch PVC, and you're on Miller Road and Dunbar Road, it's gonna be isolated from a two and a half PVC.
Uh, motion by Mr. Gaines.
Second.
Second by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Any names, motion carries?
We have one question.
Okay.
No.
Number one question?
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, board.
Good morning.
Uh. I have a illegal dump site, uh, illegal dump site reimbursed with one thousand. Four hundred and ten thousand percent.
Is that something you handed me earlier, or is it already in the folder?
It should be. It might be in the folder, I don't know. I think it's in the folder, four feet six foot, probably.
So you turned it in, I see some of the pictures. I wish we had a uh, a road department's. Uh, part of the folder.
He said it's the very first thing, President Wilson. In the front call.
I got a budget increase, I think it's probably piled on that. Opioid. There it is, sunrise. We we gotta put that in. Is that Brad? Okay, uh, I'm sorry, Robbie, went back to, how much was the uh?
Eight thousand.
This payment was eight thousand?
No, one thousand four hundred and ten thousand.
Okay, the bottom three cents, okay. All right. D E Q. Press repayment. Uh, need motions, moved by Ms. Hutchins.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion, all in favor? Uh, any names, motion carries?
I have uh, three. Illegal dump sites, uh, along Cemetery Road, along Providence Road, and one across the forty two steam plant road, you should have some pictures of those.
Say it again, please.
Cemetery Road, Providence Road, and across the forty two steam plant, it's illegal dump sites.
You need a motion?
Yes.
No move.
Second.
All right, motion by Mr. Gray, second by. Mr. Gaines. All in favor?
Uh.
Motion carries.
Uh, Mr. Slower. The ground pit. And dirt, we've been discussing last few meetings, wherever it's at.
The, we're okay with it, the contractor, as you know, we talked about, is gonna let us out of it, so.
So we can move forward to you?
Yep.
Uh, sent you the contract with the guy with the cameras in town, uh, that would, that somebody talked to us about doing a demo or whatever. Uh, the camera for thirty days, decided we sent that to you. Is that something that we want to do? On trial basis?
You'd want to decide, it's a thirty day trial basis that you could get out of it, and then if you don't put it in the thirty days, then. Contract goes forward, and you decide if you wanna do a one, two, or three year deal, obviously doing the three year deal is, keeps your pricing the same. And I don't think it's very much, it was like eighteen hundred dollars a year.
Right, same.
So you're talking about like seventy three hundred dollars?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, but that's per camera.
Per camera.
And you know, we brought that, uh, excuse me, Mr. President, but.
No, here.
Yeah, that's. The guy that came in, and you know, we were trying to, we were dedicating some, I asked about some camera. Uh, for, trying to catch some of these illegal numbers. Uh, but it came up, that'll be seventy three thousand per camera.
Hundred.
Seventy three hundred, yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
Uh, so we probably.
Over the course of.
Three years.
Mr. Gaines, over the course of three years.
Oh, okay, so. I'll make a motion that we do a thirty day trial and see how it works before we move forward.
Can I do one camera?
One camera.
Second.
Uh, you. Moved by Mr. Gaines for one camera for thirty days, and second by Mr. Gray, any discussion?
Uh, at the discretion of wherever the road department put it, and you ain't got nothing else.
Put it at the barn.
Okay, next thing.
Okay, I haven't carried the motion to this. Yes, here.
I was just gonna ask, y'all put it up and we have access to it.
Correct.
Oh, okay. All right, all in favor? Uh, any names, motion carries?
Uh, next thing, I have uh, Mr. Woodruff contacted me again this morning, uh, you know, he'd come in before about the doctor's home in the property in Avalo. Paying me a cost point for us getting the river shield mile, when we needed it, and he from Park, get a boat and stuff up on the old. Uh, construction parking lot, y'all had agreed to it back at the time. But I think Mr. Slower had put something in place for him to sign, or the doctors to sign, the landowners. Uh, I don't think they signed it reasonably for us, I think it was a clause or something about if we needed to cut trees down, we could. They didn't want to cut any trees down, what Mr. Woodruff told me this morning, but I told him I didn't think we need to cut any trees, because enough river shield in the open that. We wouldn't have to do that, but. He was still, he wired on it this morning. And the waters coming up, they're trying to move some of their stuff out to higher ground.
It's been about a year, but I don't remember anything specific, other than we got a full release to do whatever we need to do for a cost point, was what we'd asked for.
Yeah, I asked, I think if we get there now.
So you just wanna scratch that clause out about the cutting the trees down?
Yeah, just for river shield.
Do we need a motion of me in that?
Yes.
Yeah, we pulled up.
While he's doing that, uh. Dunbar Road, I got a call that there was a lot of tires being dumped there.
Yeah, sure, uh.
Dunbar.
And I'm gonna bring it up this.
Y'all got my pictures of the dump site? Angela, you got any calls about tires being dumped on Dunbar?
You've got calls, about?
Oh. Somebody, I don't remember who called, to be honest with you. Might have been Si.
I was gonna talk about tires, my report.
No, okay, go, uh, what, did you find it, Scott, or just continue on?
Well, uh, I go to talk about the tires, that's in my report, but uh. In our conference in Jackson, we're not the only county in the state of Mississippi having that problem, the D E Q, people spoke with us, and it's all over eighty two counties, they're having a lot of trouble with these things, and they're trying to come up with something that. They can do to identify what shops are doing these tires or whatever. Um, I got some pictures on my phone, and I was gonna get with the sheriff, I took last week of a couple of pickup truck loaded with tires. And I followed it, but it didn't go anywhere in the county, the state, within six minutes. Uh, so I'm gonna show you the pictures of the truck, but it's all over having that problem of tires. I would do other than, like you said, cameras and things like that, and do, but I know it's, Cranfield's have a lot of problems in that area.
Actually suggested to the investigator that called me about it, I said, why don't you make every shop have a number? And they have to brand their tires, when they take them off the cars, and they have to have invoices for every tire they have. Like the shop that the D E Q went to, and they, he said, well, I send my tires to Liberty, well, they can get their tires from Liberty, but when they called Liberty, Liberty said, they don't pick up their tires. So he, I said, what are you gonna do about it, you know you're relying to it, she, oh, I have the authority, and I'm like. You telling me the D E Q doesn't have any authority to do anything, that makes no sense whatsoever, because every time they call me about something in the oil field, it costs me ten thousand dollars or so. So, don't tell me you don't have any authority, you have to hurt these people in their pocketbooks, that's the only way to stop them, there's no other way to stop them.
Well, they're saying they don't have any, in the county for, in the state to dispose of type, like people buying them and bringing them like that big fire up there in Jackson or Cherry. You know, then our plant here. Which may mention that I. Days that, uh, they were moving some of this equipment out of this plant.
Yeah.
Uh.
I don't know that, but.
Are they supposed to be moving equipment out of there? The the tires threatened? Is that Delta?
Well, it's it's.
Fever.
Fever. They're not supposed to be moving equipment out, are they supposed to be?
Purchased all the personal property.
Were they supposed to be opening up operations?
Yeah.
So hopefully they're moving equipment in and not out.
Yes, President, I mean, they were the, I bet they're bought all the personal property, and they're paying us rent, so.
I I was thinking about this uh, tire issue, and I don't even know how this would work, but uh, I think. Maybe you. In the attorney. Need to get with the uh, companies inside the city limits, just like when you get ready to tear down a house, you gotta go get a permit. And they make sure you're supposed to be taking this to the dump. The city need to put orders in place for these companies inside the city limits, and we need to find a way to do it with the ones outside the city limits. And when they get ready to dispose of those tires, then they need to let them know where they disposing the tires at, where it won't go to somebody putting them on their.
We wanna see, we wanna see some paperwork. I think that's a good idea, Mr. Gray, that we uh, work with the city and try to figure out how we're gonna monitor these, because if the D E Q won't do it through the state, maybe Adams County can do it. Um. Whatever, whatever authority we have.
Scott, what'd you think?
Got it written down as something to do with city.
Okay. I got, I think, I think that's, if we gotta start it here, we'll start it here. Okay, you go ahead, Mr.
Find that call for I P or?
Yeah, it was a.
Probably the point.
General lease, and I just. One of the listed items was timber, but. It was just saying, everything in the union discourse that we might need that property to be used, we can use it, and one of the listed things was timber, so now I switched it, cut out timber, and I excluded timber out of the. Union, universal discourse to. Don't touch any timber.
Do we need to change that, make a motion to change, or you?
I mean, I would do it, I'd give it to Robbie and see if they'll sign, if they sign, we can come back and operate later, go and. Send something to.
Well, they're gonna, the the river's coming up pretty fast, and they're gonna start moving that stuff.
Yeah, it's ready to go.
Yeah. So if we need to go ahead and make a motion, say, y'all, we need to.
We can make the offer, you know?
Okay. Uh, I need a motion to uh. Take that, cutting trees out of that part of the uh, letter to them. An ocean by Mr. Middleton, second by Mr. Gaines, uh, any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any names, motion carries?
Was uh, our board approved for us to get an illegal truck back, and we've come for four months of time, uh. Just get time, we need one, while we were in Jackson, the whole boom broke out of ours, I'm better than the shop trying to get it, we need it, right now we got a heavy storm, we probably had more trees down this past weekend than we've had in a long time. Uh. Just wanna give permission from the board, it's gonna advertise, put specs together, it's gonna advertise an illegal truck, that's. Okay, the board.
Second.
All right, moved by Mr. Middleton, second by, all in favor?
Uh.
Any names, motion carries?
Thank you. Uh, okay. Mr. Wilson, I put up there, uh, at the bus farm, we got a request from them to work their parking lot and get some gravel, but uh. They need to purchase the gravel, and we'll spread it to Karen Gray, and it works a lot potholes, and so we done it, paid for that, so they have some requests asking for that.
Okay. You need a motion?
Yes.
Motion by Mr. Gaines, second by. Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries?
All right, that's all I have.
Okay, um, who else, go ahead, Mr. Gaines.
Uh, Mr. Doc, can you uh, follow up on that uh, text that we talked, when we were, I know we was in Jackson, you know, we used to do the uh. The road right at Colein, the pothole?
Yes.
Yeah, I know it's been busy, but uh, I just received a text in, uh, you know, about that, so.
Anything else?
Um.
Hold on, I'm gonna cut. Mr. President?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, we got a serious problem on Six Rand Road. Uh, this happened a long time ago, and uh, this is just my personal opinion. That this county need to find a way to alleviate this problem, and I'm gonna show you a picture, and you can pass it around. And that's, that's, that is a pond, or whatever, on somebody private property, that, that uh, water exists. I went out there when it was raining and took these pictures, and also she sent me, uh, here go the other picture.
So that's, that's not supposed to hold anymore?
I I don't know, maybe Robbie can help you, but I think it was before his time.
Yeah, before my time.
That's the other one right here, y'all.
Is it a rotting pond?
No, no, they were all white man.
Before you respond, let me think. Here go the problem. All that water you see on this side of the street, the county went and put a drain under the street. Now all this water here drains. On somebody private property. And I don't know at the time, did they have anything on the property, but right now they got houses and trailers and everything on the property, so. The county put a drain to drain this place out. And it's going on somebody private property, so we need to find a way, and it's eroding, the label private property, so. We changed the direction of the route of the water to make it go on somebody else's private property, so how do we fix that, Mr. Attorney?
First of all, you have to plan on how you can address the, the water flow, and then you gotta get permission for everybody to get off of the torque, the channel, whatever, this is what, for all of our time, is what you're saying.
Well, uh, it was before your time, or was it?
Before my time, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm gonna tell you, you know, a lot of times when people buy these pro, buy property out, whatever they do, they develop. They go in and put all the drainage systems in, they do this, and do that, do that, and then the county accepts it. It's not that the county goes out and put cross pipes and things, it's that the developers that developed the neighborhoods are that property to do it. And then when they put them in, and then when the county accepts it, that's what they accept, what you just, what you're showing. It's not that the county had went out and put that pipe in, because it was for my time, I did put a pipe in, it was already there. I think Herman Carroll owns a property on that side of the road, and he had put a bunch of drainage pipes under ground, to this property, trying to divert that water where some of them are rolling on, or. Travers off to there, if I'm not mistaken, I've bought that property. Knowing that issue was there, knowing that the water was running across, but it's still person, it's still his, but I'm like you, we need to figure out a way, we got three spots on Old Town Road that's doing the same thing, they developed Old Town Road.
Let let me help you out. Uh, give you my opinion. First of all, this piece of property where the water is coming down out of all the neighborhoods into this hole, is not the county property. So why would anybody go let this water out on another piece of private property, whether the county did it or not, somebody did it. And the water is coming off our county roads and filling up this big old, whatever this is. And it's going under the road, which we need to find out, did the county put the pipe down there, or did a private person that sold the property put the pipe down there? From what I'm looking at.
I hope I.
I may be wrong, but it looked like the county did this. So if the county didn't do it, then we need to figure out how to address this.
I don't, I don't mean it, but like Mr. Wilson, Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Uh, when you've developed your neighborhood, you developed it, put all the drainage, all the storm drains, you done every bit of that, and then you're trying to get the city to adopt and accept what you have.
That's correct.
That's what, that's what takes place.
I I I'm familiar with that, Robbie, but what I'm saying is. Can't nobody read. Can't nobody redirect water to somebody else's property because nobody live there, it's still somebody else's property.
But at the time.
Wait, 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 wait. And if you gonna redirect water to somebody else's property, you need to have something in writing. Why those people agree to allow this, all this water to come through their property.
But it's not five or six or ten land numbers, when a developer developed, he buys that hundred acres or that old track or whatever it may be and then when they develop and put those streets in, he put the drains.
You saying the developer did?
I, I'm guessing one did, we did, the county did, I didn't lie in here, let me, let me straight.
Well, investigate it and make sure that the county didn't do it. What I'm saying, if the county did do it, then we need to find a way to relieve this lady of the problem she having. Because all of this water is eroding her property and then even her water.
Correct, I understand.
But she say the county made a motion in a meeting back in the days, I wasn't there, you wasn't there, none of us was there. The only thing I say, this is a lot of water.
I get her a couple of minutes, I'm gonna tell if it will make a motion.
Thank you, and the next thing, uh. I figured out a miracle, but then I got one more for you.
Mr. Gaines.
Yeah, Robbie, um, that conversation came up, I did, uh, receive a video during the rain. Uh, and I'm glad we brought it up because we don't actually need to address one property, we need to address three issues. Uh, Thomas Smith on Morgantown Road, Mr. Ben Udimba in the Church of God Jesus Christ. Where that water is actually, and I, and I understand kind of same thing, Morgantown Road was probably built before you born, I born and everything else and water was directed that way. But those properties over there, I know and the engineer, I don't know if he's back there, uh, if he's left. But we, we definitely need to go back, cause I know we've been fighting, uh, Thomas Smith, I guess since the two, first year or two since I've been here. And we need to address that water issue on Morgantown, we definitely need to address, address them in all three places on, on there. And, uh, why, when that came to mind, uh, three nineteen, which we wrote the work on for yesterday and, and, uh. And, and Broadmore, uh. At three, I think it's three seventeen or three twenty-one to one before you get there, uh, while we in that area, we definitely need to address that too. Because I think the previous driveway, if you're coming from the south, uh, when you go in Broadmore, if you turn in right there, if you go before. I think it's kind of stopped up and that might be causing some of the problem. And I, I know that homeowner has been in touch with me and I told him we bring it up, so we'll. I told him when the weather dry, we'll have to take care of three nineteen, but I want you to also look at three seventeen.
We got fixed concrete head wall.
Yeah, the concrete head wall going on one side of it.
Yeah, we got fixed that.
Alright, okay then, and I think this, oh, the, the, uh, Adams County water. Did we ever get with them on those, uh, potholes, I know they have been behind, cause I got the call again on Morgantown and Burkhardt. Did we ever get with them?
I talked to them, uh, they're gonna, that they're gonna make a repair, they were putting sixteen on Burkhardt in the back the other day after me and you spoke, I went back and put some, but. You know, we were working with Miller, you know, everybody supposed to come back AT and T, put the ass off where they need to.
So, and that, and that's one of the things I bring to the board attention while we here, uh, talking about that. What, what I'm, what I'm referring to, uh, and I know it's probably y'all areas too, we have been having, uh, digging on the roads, uh, by different utility companies. They come in and they dig up and they repair lines and they leave potholes and now we, um, have to, I'm getting repeated calls, repeated call, uh. To go fix them and we, once we get with the county and they go look at them, you know, it's the pipeline, it's other utility companies. But not a county having to eat them and I think we put something in place that, uh, they will get a permit before they dig. So we can make sure that they are responsible for putting our road back in the same place that we found them in. So we definitely need to, uh, get with Robbie and stand behind him to enforce those. We need to get a, ride those areas and if they don't come back in a reasonable amount of time, we need to hold them responsible for fixing the road. Because at this point, I'm getting a ton of calls by them as a supervisor as it goes through the rest of the county and. The rest of, uh, the supervisor is gonna start getting a call and it make it look like that the road department ain't doing their job, but actually y'all are doing y'all's job. And you can't, uh, you taking the heat from somebody else, so I just was, hope the board would help us enforce that.
Okay, Mr. Slow, did we not, uh, set up a permit system?
Been there.
Have, have we notified the utility companies?
Yeah.
Okay, has anybody got a permit?
I was just gonna ask that question.
And who's supposed to be?
I think they come through Brandon, if they do, could you send them to us to let us know, because they're, they're all over the county.
And we, we don't release them until?
Keyword is if.
Well, if they're, if they get notified, they don't, we should drive up on one and ask them, where's my per, where's your permit? Do you shut them down two or three times and it cost them some money? They will stop? Yes, sir.
Um. From now on, this is my opinion, when we put policies in place. If they don't have a penalty. If you don't do this, if there's no penalty, they gonna keep doing it. So we need to have a penalty for if they don't do what we asked them to do, then we fine them and I bet you they'll start doing what they.
Well, there's, there's, there's two ways we can do it, first, you shut them down for no permit and it costs them a lot of money, but the second thing is, we do need to have a fine system.
Mr. President, and the next thing, to say, to, to piggyback on what the supervisor Gaines said. If the county road department have to go out and do anything that costs us some money, we need to send them the bill. We don't need to be paying the bill for that, that's the way they do it over here.
Well, that can be explained in the permit. And we need, I say we need to make sure it's happening.
And if, and if they do come to get a permit, would you please email me to let me know where they are, because like I said, it's Athens, it's not Athens, but Miller, they're working for Athens, they're contractors, they all do. They all need us to do it on AT and T's bay, I own them cemetery road, they got three spots there, seven spots we like on AT and T right now.
The only ones we've received are Adams County water, cable one, Seastar, I think so. That's the only ones we've ever received.
Mr. President. Mr. President, you do miss, miss Brown?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Hensley usually do a lot of work when, when they cut, they'll call, in the city they'll call Hensley. In which I know he done passed, so that company is, don't exist no more. So what I'm saying that you probably don't have nobody even doing it now.
Well, like Miller does their own, they got little truck, little dump truck, they go out there and they get their hot picks on their own, when Apex run and that might get, I mean, winters here too and they're probably not running a lot, they'll put it out and, and roll theirs in. When they do.
I do wanna, uh, add to that, I, I had a call on several months ago and I told him to actually, uh. Get with the county, uh, that's Rankin Construction out of Fayette, Mississippi, uh, that's Cliff Rankin is the owner, uh, he has a. He do asphalt, I know he has laid some asphalt for, uh. Just Johnson County, Cleveland County, Alcorn, so he has a, a legitimate business after Hensley died, he did contact me. And said that he will be willing to, you know, try to get on six month bid, he can do smaller jobs like that. So I do wanna say that we have somebody, you know, within the area that can probably get a small job. And I need to call him to make sure he get a necessary paperwork to the county and make sure we follow the, uh. Needed procedures to, uh, have him to, so he can maybe do some work for it. Cause I know it's hard to get anybody to do work and, you know, I know the newcomer is not gonna stop for to do a side hole or, or road.
Next Thursday, they're live our six month bid, she's advertising that for them.
So I need to get with him if he wanna do that, I need to have him to send something in before next Thursday, I will contact.
And Robbie.
I give a thought.
Go ahead.
And Robbie, if y'all come across any companies, I certainly don't mind sending them a letter and explaining to them what the process is and that they have to fill out this application. That, you know, our engineer has to go out and the engineer comes back to me, signs off on the paperwork and, you know, what the process is and what they need to do.
So, if y'all see anybody doing that, you saw, see if they got a permit and if any of the supervisors said, we need to stop asking what they have permits for from now on. Uh, Robbie, uh, you sent, you brought these pictures up here from Pretty Creek Bridge?
Correct.
Okay, um, you didn't bring it up, but.
I thought it was gonna be a state aid, but it's not, state aid, bridge was the bridge we did there in the front, that there over all. I think that's what the other, I would say that I guess right there, Deerfield.
Uh huh.
So this one here is gonna be on us and I'm watching, see if I get some bays to drive, some piles, and once we get the piles, drive, we do the rest.
Alright, do you need us to do anything on this?
Nothing, I'll be back now once, I talked to Mr. Ford, it was, I'll come back to the board to do a part of the pile.
Okay, um, last thing, Delauder, is that Far Road?
Uh, the tires, uh, yes, sir, that is, uh.
That lady called me, and I saw her at church and she's like crying, she, she's had enough of this.
I talked to Mr. Gaines about it, I've been by twice to talk to him last week. They told him that the county was gonna stop picking up tires from him because I think what's going on there is, you know, his place burnt. So the majority of those tires did burn up.
Mm-hmm.
So what tires he got, he's telling me he's not, but I think those tires are coming in, he saw them through, he getting what he wants, put the rest out by the road, he was on the county down to pick them up.
And we warrant him.
And I told him we, we could do that any hole, we picked up several thousand tires from him since we told him we could help him. Uh, I think we need to watch, I pulled up, it was a red Ford truck there with, uh, some tires in the back, the guy drove off, I got out, talked to Mr. Delauder. And he said, no, the guy don't want me to put them on his truck, I said, I, I don't know, I said, but he's got tires in his truck and he drove off when I pulled up. Uh, so it's something going on there for his tires, he's collecting, he's got too many tires that he's putting out by the road, not had that many tires still on his lot.
Okay. Uh, Scott, talking about Delauder out there on, uh, Far Road. Um.
Then within a year, right?
He, uh, he continues to gather tires and sell tires and we pick up, I mean, it's like, he's getting paid to it, three dollars a piece to get rid of them and, and we're, we're picking them up, so. What, 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 what can you do about that or Sheriff, what can we do about it?
He asked the right person.
Okay, start, start out, but I figured you'd have a comment.
No, no comments yet, not till y'all finalize whatever penalty y'all trying to put on them at that time, wherever y'all be at, we'll be ready to take, take care of business.
Alright, at this point, we just.
We've already got down tire monitoring program, tire enforcement, this is gonna go hand in hand and that place has been declared a menace. I don't, I feel like it's been within a year that we declared it a menace, but you go back and look, we're gonna deal with it way over a year.
Go ahead, Mr. Gaines.
Assess it back on the taxes.
And, you know, I, I have been constantly monitored too and I guess, you know, I guess people get comfortable with, you know, who they used to know, who they know more and. You know, they talk to, cause I have people in every, in different district, if they wanna talk to somebody, they'll call, they'll talk to another supervisor, like if. But I do want to make them aware that I was out there on Far Road, cause you know I ride my district pretty often. I know a lot of time people might not see me, uh, as much, but I ride, I'll get up at daybreak. And I ride on Saturdays and Sundays, so I constantly making a look through and meaning that roadmen have been in contact. And, uh, we did, we have discussed that reason that something need to be done, we have definitely given him an opportunity to do, uh. To do what he need to do and from the looks of it, I was out there when the fire was and, uh, back behind it and it's, he's accumulating more. Not unless he's, after he came in here and the board has given him an opportunity and we have taken measures to actually help him. Allow him to put up a fence, allow us to move some of the breeze since the big fire, you know, that's one of the biggest thing, we had all the. A neighboring sheriff department, there was so much stuff that we had to get neighboring folks to come in and help us. Uh, as a matter of fact, we was doing the, uh, emergency manager was doing a drill during that time, so we had a lot of other people in town. To help contain that fire and the county had to end up, uh, bringing dozens to save other people's properties and stuff like that. So he has been given, uh, reasonable, uh, time and, um, he continues to do right. So I just do want, uh, the president to know and the ones who watching and who do watch me, that I'm in support of whatever we need to do. But there is legal stat, uh, statutes that we have to follow and, uh, I know that's one thing that is hard for county government. A lot of people don't understand that we can't just jump up and do what we wanna, when we wanna, because when we bind as a citizen, you wanna, you, you have to be careful not to. Uh. People have rights and we be on a different, uh, contract, so I know, I know it get tiring sometimes, but we have to follow legal steps to be able to do what we need to do. But at this point, I think that we will, so I, I appreciate, um, Mr. Wilson, I appreciate you, Mr. Dow. But I wanna inform the rest of the board, uh, Mr. Dow, you get us some pictures and maybe we need to get him back in here and we need to let him know, uh, attorney. See whatever we need to do on the terms and we need to go ahead and impose what we can do legally.
Well, like I said, those eighteen hundred motors that burned up, all that stuff been burnt, they're stacked back full of tires again, I got.
Well, so it's obvious, you've got picked, you got proof, so you don't need anymore, always need to, we didn't need to get him in here in the next board meeting again or, uh. You know, file charges, whatever we're gonna do.
But let's, let's address this too, so you know, one of the things that we, while we was know about it, the question was, he had so much stuff. Where are we gonna put it? So we, you know, that was the addressing part of it, we need to know from them, cause he has so much stuff. When, if we have to go and clean it up and charge him for it, what's gonna be done, I know one time they had even talked about selling the eye, having to pay the fine and stuff like that. Cause that's a part of his property that will be taken, so lawyer, please do the legal rights, because at the end of the day, I wanna do it and take the help to citizen. But I still don't wanna put the county at a lawsuit like this.
Alright, Robbie, do you got anything else?
I particularly don't care to see him back in here, I think we've given him more than enough opportunities. I think the fire that day could have caused a lot, a lot of loss to, to property owners surrounding him. I know our road department, whoever goes on the grass, first time it hit dirt, was out there trying to cut a lane, we need to do what needs to be done and move on, I don't wanna hear another side of that word, because he's not helping, he's not willing to help on it.
Scott, do you need anything else?
I mean, he might have come in here to.
I'm telling him to.
Notice for whatever.
Well, you, you, we're gonna have to do whatever's legally, so that's, that's, that's your end of the spectrum.
Tell him to.
Uh.
I could go check and see, I don't think.
Robbie, is that all?
That's all.
I, 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 I got it. I just think, uh, I know Robbie done doing a good job of addressing this and I don't bother, but every time we have a big rain, uh. They gotta go out there and, and, and fix a problem and I don't know how it could be alleviated, but. I just think we need to do something different, cause every time a big rain come, it blow out. And last thing is, um, while we own tires and all that, what have we tangled with to deal with the Southview?
Yeah, I'm gonna call the Secretary of State, tell him we got a big problem and hoping that they will grant us the lands and we can enforce it ourselves.
I don't need no help, but we've been calling the Secretary of State for I don't know how long and, and, uh. We need to get on with that, man, because they got more going on, it's just having tires and trails and all that down there. This, this is an emergency.
Is it, is it, is the Secretary of State taking the land for taxes?
State of Mississippi owns the land.
So we can buy, we have to buy it from them?
They ought to give it to us.
They ought to, who would question that?
Yeah, I don't know how much taxes are, how much we're talking about, but legally.
What need to happen, Mr. President, we need to let them know how much this is costing us to clean all this up. And either they need to give us the property, but we need to send them a bill. They shouldn't be immune from getting a bill like everybody else when they ain't doing their job.
The statute amends them from a bill, that we can, we get permission to spend it, but we can't charge it back to the state. The state has a fund that.
Have we asked for it?
Yes, we asked for it.
What'd you say?
They gave us permission to go clean it up and then give us any money back. But we, and it ended with us, uh, what?
Force him out of his state, cause he say he own part of it, and that's what I say, I mean, we just think it all over the place, do it.
Miss, miss Robbie Dollar, I got an app on my phone and all the time it's not accurate, but the only thing we gotta do is ask Paige or whoever over there that got a description of who own what. We ain't gotta ask him nothing, cause he gonna lie, like he been doing.
Well, he can tell me he own this whole.
Well, my app tell me different, so who we gonna go by, him?
I'm going by legal.
Let's go by what Brandon them say.
Alright, alright, thank you Robbie, uh, departmental reports, who's next?
Good morning, the board. I have just a couple of things, uh, the last employee that we hired, Christopher McIntyre, uh, we, the paperwork we submitted was incorrect. We submitted paperwork for sixteen eighty-one an hour, he actually should have been brought in at seventeen ninety-one an hour, so we submitted a, uh, a blue plane to change his pay rate from sixteen eighty-one to seventeen ninety-one.
Is that in the folder?
Yes, sir. I have everything signed by each of us, I've got.
You got it, cause I, I, I didn't ever, I didn't see anything else for uh, uh, new hires or, I don't believe about what the secretary.
Is, is this a new app?
No, no, sir. That's not a new hire, we hired, we approved uh, Chris McIntyre last year, we, and we brought him into the wrong paper.
Yeah, I don't have to think.
Is he a new employee?
He's a rehire.
I don't have this paperwork, but, okay. Need a motion, uh, to uh, raise his rate from sixteen eighty-one to seventeen ninety-one.
Some more.
Motion by Mr. Gray, did I hear a second? Second, by Ms. Hutchins, any discussion?
Let me say this, I know we have a problem with retaining good people, but it just means, but all this jumping around. You jump over here, you go over here, and you go over here and, 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 and you come back and you think you supposed to get the same thing on the left or you get more. Uh, I, I, I want good people too, but they just can't be jumping around like that, man.
Okay, all, all, unfortunately, any more discussion, all in favor?
Alright.
Alright, any names, motion carried.
I have uh, two more for you, uh, these are both corporals that are being promoted to sergeant, uh, so they will go from the pay rate of seventeen ninety-one to nineteen eighty-eight. One of them is a various Florida city government, it's Christopher Shropshire, this is within our current flow chart, or two charges short. Uh, and Scott, I'll send you a new flow chart, uh, these are the.
Do you have that paperwork?
Yes, sir.
None of that came, is in my folder. Yeah. Let, let's do that in discuss, uh, after we make a motion. Oh, need a motion?
Some more.
Move by Mr. Gray?
Second.
Say by Mr. Gray, any discussion?
Uh, had that been uh, submitted and you checked that the money there?
Uh, it should be because he had, um, they were, they been previously submitted their flow chart and all that, the changes are in here, part of the, um.
You're not quite sure, but you think it should be?
Not saying, he had previously submitted their flow chart and their pay scale, so it should be within, well, he had already submitted.
That's fine, okay, alright.
Any more discussion, all in favor?
Uh huh.
Any names, motion carried.
Um, I would, today then, it would be possible to get the potholes patched in front of S O G, well, y'all have heavy equipment and stuff out there and it has gotten probably a foot deep riposte uh, there in front of our office. Yeah, they may just have something called to patch that or whenever they're out or pass some extra stuff around, uh, have a safety vehicles a little bit.
Now Robbie?
Okay.
Okay, he's got it, alright.
Uh, the only other thing is, I'd like to publicly thank the people that came out over the weekend, you know, we patrolled out after a sex offender and it was around the Duncan Park area. As you know, we, we ran into you uh, that day, but literally every employee except maybe three that were out of town or had previous uh, engagements, showed up and came out there to help search for that individual. They also had wildlife, kind of two camels away, to come and kill, without even noticing, uh, and then of course, an S P U. Uh, it ended up taking three days to find this individual and it was about, I would say, close to twenty hours of actual hard searching. Um, and they turned around and came back out on Monday again, which was a holiday for us, without, they weren't made, they were just asked who was available and just a few showed up. So that, that's a special thing, whenever you have deputies that will come out on those kind of situations, when you're dealing with those kind of violent people and it's in the, in the city, it's not necessarily in the county. But it was around the park, it was around homes, and we ran everywhere from Sibley to Craneville and um, over and across the country. So it just, I wanted to publicly thank all those that did come out and help over the weekends to uh, capture that individual.
Alright.
I do, alright, I'll let you, you can? Yes, sir.
I might not say this much, but I do wanna say I appreciate both of my chiefs and I appreciate the board for even just working with us for what y'all do with our budget, because when you got that much personnel running and gunning out there, you really need to have people that you trust and places that are knowledgeable. To make sure that your, you know, orders and things are carried out in a way that no harm comes to them or to the individual we pursuing unless they change the rules of engagement. And both of these cases this time, you know, in Adams County and Franklin County, you know, we were able to apprehend those such, such suspects without incident, so it just goes to show all that training that you all pay for. Now you see it as not a little waste, so I just wanna thank y'all publicly and say that. The other thing is, he's already thanked the citizens and everybody, but I wanted to ask the board, y'all still gonna get that dumpster for us when we can stop picking up this trash in all these warehouses? We, we still rolling pretty heavy with the, with the dumpster trash and.
I mean, entitled to get some dumpsters to do the trash, they, the contracts, I messaged that to you sometime ago.
Has someone contacted them?
The contract requires them to get us what we need for dumpsters, so I don't know who has to call for the dumpsters, this.
State board if you would. Somebody from the board.
No, the county administration, the board.
The management said the board can't do that, you must, they, they operate.
Where do you want that?
You can put one back here.
That, that way.
They moved it from back there, this side, they had to move it from right here where it was, because the, um, they kept having problems getting in and out and they bumped someone's car. That's why they put it on top.
If it's on top, that's fine.
It is one up there.
They want it up. Another one, we need another.
Okay.
Or they just need to draw.
Dump that one more.
There's no room in your parking lot?
We don't have one, y'all got another front.
I mean, now, it's really, it's on it, this would just be the thing you.
I have to park on street, put my place in the background, I'm supposed to park, it's always got something in it, you know, so that big truck of mine won't fit back there.
Yeah, that's why I said, we don't, we on the block and we don't have room.
Well, we're gonna have to, somebody's got to look around, figure out where we're gonna put this thing.
There's room to put it right by that other one up there.
They can pull, they can pull straight in, yeah.
And you can put it by the other one, if, if the county administrator you can order, that'd be great, that'd help us a lot.
Yeah, there's room, there's room.
Why can't you just pull it more often, you know?
You can dump it. Just dump it once a week, dump it twice a week.
Instead of having to dump it.
Yeah.
That's, that's up to y'all.
How much, they only dumping it once a week?
I don't know, they have to say that.
We'll find out.
You know, it's been a while.
Yeah, figure out which, which way, whatever they're doing, they need to double up.
I don't know.
Alright.
Um, Buddy Jones, the, the guy that, that we talked to a while back, works for the jail and all that stuff, he did, we had a, we had a Zoom meeting with him the other day. He's got his injuries engaged and he really wanted, he's asking him to be on, yeah, C C A, he got to deal with C C A and did parties out there. He asked me to get on the minutes, uh, get on a, agenda for the March seventeenth board meeting, so that he can just tell you all whether or not those pods can be used. Just give y'all idea of, of what an actual facility would cost and no cost to the board. He just asked for time to talk, that's all.
Any problem with that guys? I'm sorry, and lady?
No.
Yeah.
Okay, fine.
Alright.
Just call for that.
The other thing is, I've been asked to come to Washington D.C. to meet with the National Institute of Riches, they're selecting five chairs from every major law enforcement organization across the state. To come to D.C. at their expense, they're gonna reimburse us of course, but they, they wants to fly up to talk about priv- the, critical incidents in the deeds of the jail, because apparently this is something the new administration wants to jump on. And they wanna fund it down, and so I've been actually wanting to buy, you know, the nation to come up to D.C. to discuss that on March the fourth, just passing that on.
Okay.
The other thing is, I know supervisor, President Wilson, you brought up, you was gonna find somebody about the soil testing.
Were we there on that, uh?
What's that now?
They were, the soil testing, uh, did it cooks and, um.
I just emailed me, said he had it today, so.
Okay.
He was supposed to get it Friday and I was supposed to send him the P P I N for it and I didn't send him the P P I, P P I N, so I emailed him on Monday, I said, where is it, we're supposed to send contracts, like we were supposed to send him the P P I N, but he said he'd get it today.
Alright, and the last thing I have, uh, March the twenty-second, AKA he's got something honoring different people from different counties, so I just wanna put that out there, this at twelve o'clock. And I don't have the location, so I don't have that thing right in front of me, so I do, it might be something y'all wanna team, cause it definitely gonna be involving elected officials, so I'll, once I find out, I'm gonna do shit.
Man, I mean, uh, uh, Sheriff, uh, if he's gonna be involved in elected officials, then they need to invite us.
I agree, but I didn't say they invite.
If they don't invite us, how would we know?
Right, and, and I'm gonna tell you, anytime I see an invite like that, I just like to remind people.
I, I appreciate you, cause you remind me all the time.
I do.
At least I get a reminder about you, cause it sure don't be some of these people having something they don't remind.
I, I've learned over years, just send a little, little text and just let people know, so, for some of those humans, they're all ears, so, anyway, that's all I had, y'all have any questions, please?
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Alright, uh, public comments, ma'am, you step to the podium. Can you name and your address, please?
Melissa Adams, One Dome Road, United Mississippi.
Okay, and what, what have you got for us today?
Well, um, I recently, um, I have been the general manager of American Insurance for twenty years now. And I recently came across a situation where an agent in my office was trying to help process a claim against and dealing with our local garbage pickup. And in the process of this, we had some difficulties, there were some inadequacies in the report taken. However, that's not uncommon and we just kinda worked through that, but upon doing this, there was no insurance provided at the scene of the accident report. So we reached out to the company to ask them for their insurance and it took quite a while to get an answer from them. And upon getting that information, what was provided to us was a certificate of general liability insurance. Now, some of you may or may not know the scope of what it takes to do commercial auto insurance and the guidelines of the state, but upon getting this, the document that was sent over was not even for or matching the garbage company that we currently use, it was on the side of the truck, Metro. Uh, so that dot number, and I did confirm, matches the name on that truck, but when we were provided the certificate finally, from them, it said a completely different name. Which I did provide Mr. Wilson a copy of this certificate, and upon doing that, I also did a search with that name, see if there's a dot number associated with them, and there is not. Now, the dot number that is on the side of the trucks, if you look at the hauling authorities, because anyone who has a dot or an M C file, you gotta go through the federal motor carrier and safety administration, in order to do that, you have to have certain hauling authorities. And when you have a truck of this size and you have a truck that is also crossing state lines, you have to have your filings set in place. There is absolutely nothing with our current garbage company that says they have no ins- any valid insurance. I went so far as to reach out to the aligned insurance group out of New Orleans, who is on the certificate, no email as of today, before I left for this meeting, has been provided by the signing agent on the certificate. And when we contacted them, a lady explained to the agent in the office that it was a special circumstance. Now, I don't know what a special circumstance to her is, but there was no information given, so we reached out to the owner, trying to go through the channels. And my agent spoke with him last Friday, and I want you to know that this man was the most unprofessional, no concern whatsoever for the client, who I will not disclose due to privacy purposes. But he's a seventy-year-old man, who currently has been being treated for sickness in the hospital. And when we discussed the situation to try to help our client get his damages to this car taken care of, the only thing that was told to us was that they were self-insured. Well, by Mississippi guidelines, so that's against the law, if he's hauling hazardous material, he is required to carry five million dollars of general liability. He is also required to carry that on a auto level, he is supposed to have both. On his filing, it also says he is interstate only, if you do not know the difference, interstate means he operates only within the state in which his business is authorized. In order to cross that state line from New Orleans or Louisiana where he's stationed or staying on his dot, he's gotta have a file as interstate, he does not have that. Now, if you pull his dot, it's gonna tell you not authorized, but that just means he has to stay inside Louisiana. This gentleman basically did not have any concern for this client of ours or for our resident, in fact, Mr. Menzey went so far as to tell my agent on the phone that he didn't wanna talk to people in Mississippi because of how they were and how he had a college education and basically a status quo of himself. And I'm gonna tell you, I'm highly disappointed, the residents are already seeing the increase in the garbage, which that's to be expected, and we went this round. But for him to be non-compliant with all state laws and there's a contracted place with our board is completely unacceptable. And in all his insurance requirements, anything the board takes on, they should have to list this board as an additional insured on their insurance. And in doing so, you get a copy of the insurance, you also get notifications of when these policies canceled.
Okay, Mr. Attorney, apparently, they don't have any insurance. And, and they have not, as, as we discussed in the prior meetings, when we've had this come up, they're still running under Metro, there's, DOTs are still under Metro. They have not swapped anything over infrastructure, and now apparently they don't have insurance either. Uh, was there a lot of damage done to this man's truck or car?
Right now, we're working on the estimates because he has been sick, um, we're kinda, it's back off a little bit, um, he did get it to the shop. But we did also ask questions to Mr. Menzey, one of the agents has been in email discussion with him as to they're wanting to pay the cost out of pocket. Well, I'm gonna tell you, in my experience.
They don't have insurance.
My experience to this is, if they don't have insurance, they're not gonna pay out of pocket, that's the bottom line to it. I do not feel that's gonna happen, I do know, know the extent of the damage, other than the physical part, because there's some sensors and different things going off with the vehicle.
Was, was your client injured?
No, now, I'm, again, there were some discrepancies in the report, because there was an employee of the garbage company on the back of the truck when it hit the vehicle. There's no mention of any of this, but it was disclosed through the process of the plane, so I don't know if. So I don't know if their employee was injured, we do not have those details.
Okay, well, since you brought that up, I, I haven't, I believe we've actually spoken about it, but back and forth here. Uh, I've had a couple of people tell me that they don't have workers' comp. So if the guy was injured, I don't know what happened there. Scott, uh, we're gonna have to send a demand letter, I think, it's up to the board, I'm, just one secret file here. We're gonna have to send a demand letter, asking for insurance, and we wanna see a proof of insurance from the time they started up to date. Workers' comp, liability, which that's all that shows, it doesn't show they have any kind of comprehensive or, and also, wire their trucks, not even legal to be in our state.
And you do have to remain, they have to have both parts.
Discuss our options if you find.
Sir.
Y'all can do a close determination if you wanna discuss our options.
Okay. We'll, we'll do that.
So, what, what is this?
That is what, uh, was provided to us when we kept requesting the proof of insurance, because there was none provided on the incident, on the accident report. That was what was provided to us.
So, I, I, it's so small, I really can't read this right, so what, actually?
Okay, so what you are looking at is a certificate or a core certificate of insurance. And on there, it states that Alliant Insurance out of New Orleans has issued insurance for Mr. Menzey's company, that we don't, I don't know how that is in relation.
The date on the top is, is one twenty-eight, which was the date of the accident.
It is the date of the accident.
Is that the, that the date the insurance took effect, or they just sent, they sent a form?
No, sir. It tells you on there that I believe, I don't have that in front of me, it's right there, but I believe it's October of last year to this year for a one million dollar general liability policy. Now, that right there alone is incorrect, because the call has not, you have to have five million in general liability. There's also no auto coverage listed on there for liability, which you have to have in the event that you caused the damage or bodily injury from being driven in the vehicle, not the daily operations, which would fall under the general liability. But again, Mr. Hardy that signed off on it with Alliant never has responded to anything.
Mr. President, so you say this is a client of yours?
Our client, yes, sir.
And your company is who?
Was hit by them.
Who is your company?
Progressive.
Progressive?
Yes, sir.
And he never did get, uh, his vehicle taken care of?
Well, it took about ten days to even get that out of him, and then we found out last Friday that Mr. Menzey is now saying he is self-insured. So the car has not been repaired.
So, uh, how do we handle this, sir?
He said we're gonna go into executive session and discuss our options. We appreciate you bringing this to our attention, 'cause, uh, this is really bad for the county in general, 'cause we've got people working in the county with no insurance. It sounds like now, we gotta firm that up, but everything you've told us, I mean, you've been in the insurance business a long time. I'm quite sure you know exactly what everybody's supposed to have, but a million dollars? I, I think I have to carry five to ten million on all of my vehicles.
He's required to carry five million, and that's, that's per federal and state guidelines.
So, you know beyond a reasonable doubt that they don't have insurance, period, that's what you're saying?
Per Mr. Menzey, yes, sir, who is owner. That was when he explained to my agent on the phone last week that they're self-insured, as he put it, when we asked for his proof of insurance of where we could file a claim, because Alliant did not provide us with anything.
For, for who?
Mr. Andre Menzey.
Who is that?
He says he is the owner of the garbage company.
Jimmy, who was the owner?
That's okay, yeah.
Apparently, that's who they're in association with.
Jimmy Woods. He did.
Jimmy Woods is our owner.
So, uh.
Of the United.
I don't even, I, I'm not familiar with that name, the people that came, that we have a contract with, I thought it was.
With Jimmy Woods.
Jimmy Woods, right?
Yeah, but he had somebody with him?
United Insurance Services of Louisiana is the name of our contractor.
That's the same thing you looked into?
Yes, sir, that's correct, I did, did investigate that to see if they had a valid MDOT insurance, that's what's on the certificate. But Mr. Andre Menzey is who we spoke to, who said he was a part owner in this LLC. And that is who provided us with information and who my agent has been conversing with, who emailed about who cares of the car.
Okay, I tell you what, we gonna do our investigation and find out what's going on, 'cause right now, I don't know what's going on. So, uh, executive session, you say?
Sure. Okay. Thank you so much for being here and being patient about having to sit through all this, thank you.
Thank you for letting me know also.
Oh, you're welcome, Mr. Menzey, thank you for calling me back.
Yeah, it's, I'm all, if you want them to, one thing, I tell folks all the time, if there's something I can help you with or you fussing, I'm gonna ask you to follow me the way it runs up here.
I don't fuss too often, but I, that doesn't stand well with me, if I've gotta pay my insurances, then you pay them.
That's right. So we'll be talking, if you need me, you call me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Where, where we at?
Um, he's gonna be next, I believe.
He's right.
It ain't gonna take too long.
Okay.
Unfortunately, he went here long enough.
Well, he chose to say he wanted to do the public comment, I tried to ask him if he wanted to go earlier, he said he was good.
Oh, I know the difference, I just figured out this morning that the meeting was today, so I apologize. Uh, Gray West, pointed dogwood drive, uh, Natchez. Uh, I have been given the task to pursue bringing the Boys and Girls Club, uh, bringing it back to Natchez. So I'm making some phone calls, I discovered that I needed to partner with another Boys and Girls Club that was nearby, unlike the first Boys and Girls Club, they started on their own. So Southwest, uh, Boys and Girls Club in, in McComb is the one that's nearest us. Maybe with CEO, Mr. Marcus Pittman, uh, told him what the desire was, he came to Natchez, spoke with the mayor, Boyz Gollman, looked at the building, and decided to pursue on our end to have a unit back here on the Dare Club. So in July of twenty-four, uh, Mr. Pittman presented a letter to the Natchez County School Board requesting the use of Robin Lewis Little Club that was, had been vacant for a year or so. And in the meantime, while they were looking at that, uh, there was a, just sit the loop down for a convention here in Natchez. Uh, Southwest decided to send two of us to that, so we did some training, even though we didn't have a club yet. And, uh, after that, uh, conference here in Natchez, I think it was in August, uh, the school district, uh, decided to offer the building, uh, the school building for three years at a dollar a year, that was in December. In January, I went to McComb, it's a mayor board meeting, to see, uh, if they agreed to that, but they took it on advisement. Next meeting is next month. We've been before the mayor, Boyz Gollman, the air brand to do something. There is a convention again this year, this Thursday and Friday, in Jackson. Uh, Southwest has decided to send three of us this time, except for two others, to get additional training. In Jackson, uh, prefer very dealing with boards have to be a strong clubs in the rural community. There's a session about building a strong resource development plan, team programming, sets of practices, board carousel, a roadmap to success for government grants, board and CEO roundtable discussions and so on. So, they are, uh, sending three of us to that, uh, meeting Thursday and Friday. Just coming here to let you know, we're moving towards getting that club back together. Uh, I sent you, uh, we're first trying to build a board, working on building a board, uh, unit board here in Natchez. On the previous board was, uh, Judge John Dustin, I met with him yesterday, he's agreeing to be back on it. Maybe we walked around yesterday, still waiting on a response from him. But we gave you that information so that you may have know, you may know someone that you may recommend on the board, I, I understand. Yeah, I mean, I think sir, yourself, but you may have been recommending somebody as a group or individual, or if you know someone else. Uh, just give them that information, I know it's on the front page. So we just come to let you know we're on the move and, once we get established as a board, uh, uh, we'll be back. So, just give you some updates of where we are. Any questions?
Any questions? Yes, sir.
Red.
Yes, sir.
Uh, appreciate all the hard work that you're doing, trying to get the Boys and Girls Club back in the community. It was very, to my opinion, successful when we had it in the community, 'cause it gave, uh, some of our kids somewhere to go and something to do. Uh, I'm just gonna say this, and it's just my opinion, whether you get the money or not, in a few more months, we gonna be in the time to do our budget. You, you need to get together and, and submit a proposal for appropriation or what?
I'm giving him the sheet already that you can fill out.
And you need to do the same thing with the city, and if it don't work out, you know you don't get the money. But if it do work out, all the paperwork and stuff will be in place, and, and it won't be after we've been adopting the budget.
And that was the plan, you know, we, we headed the mayor and we never got to get it to them. Hold on before I go, and I think y'all. So when's the, we need to get back?
We need this in June, July.
Okay, yeah, okay. Once we get our board established.
Related in July first.
Okay.
Uh, let, let me say this too, uh.
I did one pass, did I miss you?
My daughter was a part of the Boys and Girls Club, um, that's where she learned basketball, she was good at it too.
I thought you told me I have to.
Yeah, she was a product of it, so, um, I know the county, uh, for the years that I've been here, I know the county always supported the Boys and Girls Club. As a matter of fact, I know when, uh, Mr. O'Byrne, I think, was the treasurer of the Boys and Girls Club, and, um, Supervisor Campbell and Supervisor West, all of them was a part of that, uh, Boys and Girls Club. So I would like to see a comeback, because I know a lot of kids were successful from that Boys and Girls Club. We did, at that time, make appropriations to the Boys and Girls Club, so I like to look back. I wanna know what you all are asking for from us, uh, to donate, for an appropriation, I'm not gonna say donate. But, uh, I like, uh, the county administrator stepping in to look back and see what the appropriations was in the past also.
Okay, and if we have to cut something else, 'cause I'm, I'm a big fan of that too, so if there's somebody else that maybe they don't need the money so, as much. Sometimes I think we're paying people that don't even have no place anymore. But, um, okay, uh, thank you for coming today.
It was my exposure, when that first girl was here for one year, um, they bought a school bus, needed a driver, so I went and learned how to drive for the school district. Y'all put a school district in the morning, the club in the evening. After one year, I went and got on the bus, I've been on the bus ever since for fifteen years, but then it exposed you to the club.
Yes.
When I realized that was a problem, so.
Thank you for your service on that, Arvin. Yes, sir, I'm sorry, you've been a long time.
No worries. Rob Mayne of Black Construction in Humphrey Regional, Mississippi. Some of y'all I know, some of you I've just met, uh, I'll do my best to be very brief, I am hungry, and I'm sure most of y'all are too. There are times that I do not envy supervisor, because you are truly in a no-win situation. One of those, and I've done, I've tried to do my research, I may be right, I may be wrong, y'all regret when I say something wrong. Y'all been dealing with this jail situation for a while. You've talked to a number of different people, a lot of different scenarios have been thrown out. You now have coffee that's been given to the corner, you have citizens that are adamantly opposed to it, you have citizens that are adamant to perform. It's probably gonna cost you some money. You're also in the catch twenty-two that you're taking detainees across the river. I can guarantee you, it's gonna cost you a lot more money if, while you have two deputies taking a prisoner across the county, there's an accident and heaven forbid somebody gets hurt, 'cause you're gonna get sued. So you gotta figure out what you're gonna do. I was under the impression that it was going to be a jail discussion this morning, that's why I'm here. There is not, I know Mr. Buddy Johns, he comes in our office periodically. We are working with the Warren County, right now helping them build their jail. They had some very distinct challenges with their situation, um, as it was put earlier, Superintendent Gray. One of the, uh, challenges that you have is the communication piece of it. The community buy-in is important, and if you start early, you involve all stakeholders, you can get some community buy-in. You're going to have paying citizens, those are citizens against virtual everything. They don't want you paying roads, they don't want anything, they don't want you to spend any money. That's how we're running this Warren County. Again, I know y'all talked to a number of different people, had a number of different scenarios. Weird, uh, we helped y'all, it may not, we may not get anything out of the deal, but if we help you, y'all may be talking to some other supervisors and some other candidates, handling, managing, Black Construction, they really help us out in yard security. With that being said, I appreciate the time, appreciate the opportunity, if there's anything we can do, I've got business heart, be glad to hand those out. Anything we can do to help y'all.
How, how, how can you help us?
How do you need help, let me ask, that's a better question, where do you need help with?
You got money?
I can help you find some money.
That's, that's what we really need, 'cause, um, um.
We do have to maybe, can we talk about that?
Yeah, you can talk about it, but, but you know, but our county, for sure, I don't know about the rest of the counties, I'm pretty sure they don't, they don't have a funding mechanism, other than applicable taxes, and to come up with the kind of money they're talking about for jails, oh, citizens are gonna buck, you know? Everything's gone up and, and, and their personal lives as well, not just taxes, but their personal lives, everything's gone up. So it's been, it is a challenge.
Absolutely, Jamie Holloway's been here a number of times, government consultants, speak to y'all. Uh, we're working with government consultants at, uh, Warren County, helping them. Y'all were talking about, um, cost of materials going up. All of our subs, we're doing two very significant deals right now, one's about fifty-five million dollars, the other's a hundred and seventy-five million dollars. Our subs carry a contingency for increasing materials in their, in their country. It's just, I, I don't know what happened when COVID hit, but the construction world went crazy. Stuff that should be done, it's costing two to three times and twice as long to build as it should. And that's, that's not Black Construction, that is across the board. I deal with counties from West Texas all the way to the handle of Florida, and I'm not singing a different song than anybody else is singing. I cannot magically make forty million dollars a year, I wish I could, I would, I wouldn't be here right now. All I can do is, what I can do, I can't give you forty million dollars, what I can do is help you with community buy-in. I can, concrete is concrete, is concrete, steel, steel, I, I don't have a source for concrete that's half of everybody else, nobody does. If they do, they're lying to you. I can help you with community buy-in and I can help you design and build the most efficient building possible, so that you get the maximum bang, the maximum buck, because you were spending taxpayer dollars to people that voted you in office. I can help you with that. I cannot run forty million dollars a year.
What I like to see is, uh, at this time, we really don't even know what a cost to build a jail. We don't know that. I would like you to get with the sheriff. We don't know that. I would like you to get with the chair. And Ms. Hudson, I, I don't know you're married.
Generally.
Generally. I would like to see you get with them. They have a committee.
We do have a committee. That was what I was trying to tell you.
Yeah.
And we're not, we're doing it in a, um, process. And we're working actually with the government to do that so that we can be listened to. But we're not there yet, but we'll take your information. I mean, we're just trying to get to the board. Everything that we can get to the board.
Just go to site plan and then they can develop a cost and they can get, because they're not sure what this particular county's needs would be.
We did do a needs assessment recently. And, um, from there, uh, we did have CCA reach out to us. We've had others. We've also learned about Warren County very, um, when we started our group a year ago. They were, had just sort of been working on it. So we're aware of everything, but we're trying to help them to get all the information to them. So any information?
Let me extend this olive branch to your committee chair and board. Um, the way Warren County is working, it's a design builder. Everybody's on the same page at the same time. If y'all would like to, and it's, Warren County is not sexy right now. It's mud and concrete. But if y'all would like to tour the site, be glad to take y'all out to the site. You can come back to our office and bring in a box lunch. And you can sit down and talk to the architect and figure out how we got my sausage made. Roughly, nobody asked me this and unfortunately the cameras are rolling. This is not a promise, but this is a good ballpark. Last year, jail was about seven hundred feet of foot.
We need to build really small cells.
In Texas, I'm hearing reports of eight hundred a foot. Um, but I, I, that's not where we are. We in one of our facilities right now, but that was a year ago. So.
Thank you for coming today and sitting through this long, long board meeting. It was only about halfway over, probably.
Well, I've always said if I ever made enough money to hit the lottery, I would start going to board supervisor meetings on regular circuit and then write a book after I got through all the stories and plays and things like that.
I was about to say, why would you put yourself through that?
Thank y'all for your time and your patience. I appreciate you.
Thank you. Okay. Any more public comments? Time to come to the table, Ricky.
Yes, Mr. President, uh, thank, uh, old partner, uh, hard work doing this. Season that we having, uh, all this rain and all these, and all this, uh, windy. It's so windy out there, man. If your shingles ain't where they supposed to be on your house, you gonna know it, because that wind gonna blow them up. As I kind of travel, I'm noticing that, uh, we not talking about it no more. There's a whole lot of people getting sick with whatever they getting sick with. I don't know. But they got a lot of people being sick, getting sick. And I just wanna say this, uh, I reached out to Scott and, uh, Robbie. We gonna need you to, well, I'm gonna let the board know when we go to Washington DC, we gonna take a package to, uh, them for Morgan Town Road with all the necessary numbers and everything, uh, that we need for this additional funding. I think Scott already gonna send something to our congressional people on the state and the federal level. So we do need a package for, uh, Morgan Town Road. Uh, Scott?
I wouldn't get credit to George too, because he did most of the.
Well, he did a real good job.
Well, I'm sure he's.
I think we was in Jackson or something contacting him and he immediately, uh, put something together with pictures or whatever it came may be and sent to our congressional people there. And I guess y'all got together and forwarded to, uh, our Washington congregation.
I'm gonna call up with him this week, kind of, what's, kind of what you do, like email him saying we're coming and then you say, hey, we're looking forward to meeting with you and whatever.
Right. I'm gonna skip to the email with the public defenders change. Uh, are we gonna discuss that during your report?
Judges are here.
The judges.
Where, where are they? Okay, well, I'm gonna need that number. And, uh, the county financial, uh, how are we financial, financially right now as a county? I need to know that. Do I talk to you, Miss Gray?
Previously this morning, I did send out the, um, comparative budget report and cash and bank report. Uh, we do have some transfers and some budget amendments that had previously been asked for, but I have to make some, break up some changes, uh, that Brandy needed me to get with. Um, I had to rehearse that and Shaqy to make sure that some of the previous, um, requests were properly accounted for and handled. Um, from looking at the previous, uh, the departments, pretty much everybody is within their percentage range for the most part. Um, but I just have to give those directions and give you a little today, um, report, but I did get one out this morning.
Thank you. Um, I just wanna say this. Um, I did go to that hearing in Jackson dealing with Morgan Town Road. And, uh, I was glad two of the commissioners voted to not to increase those people, uh, rates even more than they was decreased. Mr. Attorney, I know you're not a commissioner, but how can we put in place, I don't even know if we can do it, before people come in our community. I know the Public Service Commission is supposed to do this, but you got, you got somebody living on this side of the street with, with natural waterworks, say they fifty dollars and Allen County Water right here, they might be fifty-two dollars. And Great River, uh, right in the middle of them and they a hundred and something down. Uh, how can we do a rate study to, to determine what a water rate should be in our community? Still, uh, private companies just come here and just send the rate any kind of way they want to. Do we have to write something to the Public Service Commission? Uh, how will we go about doing that? Because I think a study need to be done to determine some of these waterworks, especially when it's like it is.
Yeah, so your city utilities don't have to go before the Public Service Commission there. You know, since they're elected body, you know, they can set their rates and then you really keep them pretty good because they're appointed by elected officials. But the other private companies have to go and get their utilities taken care of. Your co-ops, their owner owns, so, you know, like Allen County Water, the actual owners of it are the people, their own customers. So that's how rates naturally kind of stay lower with that. And then privates, it's just what they can get from.
Is there any kind of way that we can request a rate study in that area, in the Morgan Town area? Can we do that?
I'll find out if we can.
Could you find out?
Commission or whether we can have one.
One question, when you bring that up, Ricky, comes to mind is if we do anything to lower the value of property, we, we've done something wrong. They are lowering the value of that property. All those properties that have that source of water and sewage, their property values, values are less because their utility costs are so much higher than everybody around them. It makes no sense. I wouldn't buy a house out there if I had, I knew I was gonna have to pay those kind of water bills.
That's somebody need to think of. He's one hundred percent right. You can't even sell a piece of property out there now with a, a one hundred and seven dollar water bill that was gonna go up to a hundred and fifty-seven dollars if they would've voted it in. Come on, mate.
You, you, I mean, I'm telling you, I would not buy a house.
Mr. Gray, can I say something on that subject?
Yes, sir.
You know, they made a comment when they went here that every household pays the same.
Flat rate.
All right, what, what's taking place out there now? It's a lot of leaks going on. Well, the homeowner's not fixing those leaks because it doesn't matter to them. They're paying the same rate whether they fix the water leak or not. It's been one there that me and you looked at right there before you get the Booker running out and just free the big pothole. I called them. We talked to them the other day, told them they have got, not the homeowner, but the water company. He dropped down a little. He said, what's on the, I said, I understand. But we all charging this rate, why would they, I mean, you know what I'm saying? If you can't afford to fix it, you can't afford to fix it. That leak, you gonna pay the same deal. But if your bill was five hundred and it's supposed to be a hundred, you would be trying to make repairs to it. But now it's affecting our street with the pothole and stuff that's occurring out there because the homeowners are not making their repairs because they're got a flat rate of what it costs. What do we do there, Scott? I had, like I said, he was here last week, the repair guy was. And he said it's on the homeowner, but it's affected, like I said, it's affecting our street now. It's run out there so much of the cars has beaten it and it's getting, you know, burning asphalt.
In other words, how do we hold somebody accountable for, for the damage they're doing to the road?
Yeah, they are under our orders liable for damage to our road. So if the damage in our road, we send them a notice that their leaks are, you know, not doing right or whatever. They've got seven days to repair it. If they don't, we can repair it and charge it back to them.
He said it's the homeowner's side, not Great River's side. So what he's saying, they gonna let it leak because they got to pay the same thing, no matter what. So if it's a thousand dollars to get it fixed, they not gonna get it fixed. They just gonna keep paying a hundred and seven dollars because they being overcharged from the start. So how do we get around that?
And the water company likes that because they turn around and use their water usage as reason for why the rate should go in for us. That's why they hadn't put little.
That's why it's important.
Bills on each of the, of the customers.
That's why it's important. Somebody like you.
Our ordinance says.
Go up there to those meetings and say, oh, wait a minute, that's.
If the utilities breaking our road, our ordinance is the utility company.
Well, it's, it's their water supply.
So.
So I would feel like it followed me. I mean, whether the homeowner fixes it or not, it's still a water supply. If the homeowner don't fix it, they definitely, you know what I'm saying? You hate to cut the water off from the people, but they need to be responsible for fixing the road, utility company, I think.
Is it just a line between a meter and a house? Of course, they don't have a meter.
In fact, it's under the house.
They don't have meters.
It's under the house. I would walk up there and talk to them. There's an elderly lady. She's bedridden. She's got sitters and it's, it's, it's sad.
Doesn't sound like something I wanna go tackle, but I probably could get it done if I had to do it. But I, I don't like.
Uh, and last, um, I don't wanna jinx the Lady Bulldogs, but congratulations to the Lady Bulldogs for moving on to the next round in, in, in the basketball. They play Friday. They're gonna be in Friday. They'll make a trip to the big house. And my sympathy goes out to the Caroline, the Ragley, the Enney, the McDonald, the Hopper, the Dunking, the Richardson and, uh, my, my. My Lotto family. That's the lady was working in the front office at USDA. When I went in there, they had a big picture of her with something going across her. I'm like, what happened to her? And they said she passed away and, uh, I didn't know, so that's a reason. Sympathy goes out to her and her family and deck. I couldn't.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Ms. Hudson.
Okay. Uh, I mentioned this early, but I just wanted to say, Robbie, uh, make sure that, uh, that funding is released so we can apply for that application for the Kerry Road and, um, Martin Luther King. I was told up in Jackson that, um, the fund was released and we went on having a problem that we need to go ahead and make application as soon as possible. Um, next thing is Supervisor Breck, they brought this up about attending Washington. Um, he and myself will be attending. I don't know if anyone else is attending, but, uh, no, Morgan Town would be our first priority. We would make that known that Morgan Town is our first priority. Uh, also we'll be taking some other, uh, things along just to see.
What's the date on Washington?
Uh, twenty eighth.
Who did?
Four.
Oh, February?
Yeah, the end of this month, next week. Next week, next Friday. So I'll be also taking another package along with, uh, something that, uh, I had previously discussed with them last year in regards to it. Uh, we were able to get one of the projects done, which was the Kerry Road. So we were able to get funded for that. So I'll be taking that other project again, uh, this year also. Um, next thing is I need to get a couple of things approved, travel approval. And just for any supervisor that wants to attend. Well, I know we said on this board, uh, Supervisor Gray, uh, Supra, got Supervisor Gaines and myself on the PBD board. Uh, they have their annual conference April the twenty-second through the twentieth bill. And I need to get that approved.
Sir. April.
Any, oh, they went so fast, uh.
You got a.
Second.
No, you gotta move back in.
Motion.
Yeah.
I was reading something. Motion by Bill and second by Gaines. All in favor? Any names? Motion carried.
Okay, and then there's another one. It's, uh, the NACO, NACO, uh, annual convention. And it is May the twenty-second through June the first. I'll get approval for that.
So moved.
Moved by, uh, Mr. Gray, second by Mr. Gaines. Um.
May the twenty-second, twenty, twenty, I mean, June the first.
All in favor? Any names? Motion carried.
May twenty-second. June first.
May twenty-second.
Seven, twenty-seven.
And I would give, uh, paid all the information. I think that has all that. I think it's two dates, but then NACO, NACO is also, uh, July the tenth through July fourteenth. So she would give you all the information on it. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Mr. President, before you move on, I, I forgot something really important, uh, especially, uh, me and Mr. Two Thousand Gaines talked about this. Um, uh, in the near future, especially when they're dealing with our local and state, uh, representative, we as a board need to get, uh, something that this board approved, where we can go lobby for that. We don't have lobbyists no more. So, uh, when we go to Jackson, Mississippi, uh, it is our responsibility to go talk to our, uh, state representatives and let them know exactly what this board, uh, want. Now, what I want, what this board, we got a list, say this number one, two and three, or whatever it came may be. Because we are out lobbying, we are getting out lobbied by other people. And their requests are jumping ahead of ours because we don't have nobody at the table. So, uh, in the near future, uh, somebody, uh, two people or whoever from this board, especially on the state level, need to be at the table. We, we, we gotta leave anything out. Mr. Gaines?
I got it right here. What you left about it, I figured out.
Okay, thank you.
My mission is to, I agree with your Supervisor Gray. What we need to do is probably with the whole board is put something together. Uh, each supervisor something, uh, needed and maybe do a comprehension plan and put what's important first, second, third, and go down the line. So, uh, like you always said, we need a comprehension plan. We go either way else they have a comprehension plan. So that's something we need to think about putting together.
I'm gonna ask them to join y'all in Washington. I guess that might've been a meeting I missed, uh, when y'all discussed it. But I'd like to know what your, uh, your objectives are, um, certainly. But we have two, these state A roads in Mississippi are terrible. And, and I don't know if we can get the government, federal government to help us at all. Uh, but I, I mean, like Liberty Road, those are the most dangerous, Liberty and Kennedy Road, the most dangerous roads around here beside Morgan Town. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Gaines. I'm sorry, I got.
No, you good. No, no, you good. We good. We got a whole lot of time. We got a lot of time.
That's what, that's what make it quick. Ain't gonna be that quick.
Uh, but I'm gonna touch on what Dave was touching on. Um, so when, backing up to what Supervisor Gray said, that was one of my things that I was gonna. Um, so when, backing up to what Supervisor Gray said, that was one of my things that I was gonna ask, uh, just notify. Cause I did ask, uh, the attorney, the legal, you know, but I always like to inform the board. And I want to get, I want permission to be able to travel back to Jackson before the twenty seventh. Actually go to Congress because, I mean, not Congress, the legislature. And take the same plan that they're taking to Washington DC, that way, that way we are always on one accord. I feel like it's better to walk up to a person, your representative that actually know you, and hand them a package. Because I think twenty seventh is the last day, and I just want to be able to go back to the Capitol, I ended up going to Washington to debate some bills and stuff like that. And, uh, I want to be able to travel back, uh, and meet our, uh, state, uh, representative and present them some stuff. And, you know, just my, uh, my personal opinion, but I know it's something that I think we need to, uh, bring it to the table. And I know sometimes we don't always agree on stuff, but we can vote on it, and a majority win. I actually think from, uh, we need to look back into, uh, getting the lobbyists. I, I, I actually think we need to because we had more done, uh, when we had the lobbyists than I think that we have had since, well, since I've been on the board. But having somebody lobby for us, and the lobbyists was not only lobbying for just different money. The lobbyists was an asset to our administrator, our road department, our lawyers, and everybody else, some of the things that we need to do, our chancellor. If we was in a bind and we needed information, they would actually reach out and they was helping. And I think actually the money that we took in, they actually paid for theirself. But until we bring that back to the table, I would like to be able to sit down and have a discussion. You know, our, uh, our legislative is coming to a close quick, but that's why I want to be able to go and meet our people and present it. And that way we'll present stuff on the same.
Any motion to lie in drive to Jackson, did it?
Me and him both.
Okay.
What's that?
Yeah.
All right, motion.
We can make a motion, but I think it's in our policy.
It's probably we can.
We got the field, though, so we don't need emotions to travel. We do.
We don't really.
So I know it's in our policy that anytime you travel to the Capitol is already approved.
Yeah.
So that mean, uh, him and me too, we could be here?
Yeah. That's it.
So, okay, uh, that, that's one thing I want to do, but I also want to kind of touch on, uh, I got something.
When are you going or you don't?
Uh, no, I'll, it's not, we got, I have between here and the twenty seventh, so I know I got a meeting. Um, I got something. The end of February, I just put it, like, yeah, but I think he says in the policy, if you were looking up that we going to the Capitol. So between here and the end of February. But, uh, touching on what, um, President Wilson said about state aid roads. State aid roads are actually a big problem, and you know in House Bill One, that we have, um, if it fully passed, there was the option to raise taxes one point five percent, uh, for to go into state aid. And then they also gonna have a five percent fuel tax going on. So one of the things I've been doing with state aid, and, uh, at the meeting I wrote this down, and that's the operating budget for state aid has not been changed since nineteen eighty seven. So if you operating on a budget from nineteen eighty seven, this two thousand twenty five, you can, you can't have enough money. But in the meanwhile, what I did, I've been on state aid website, and I was trying to figure out, is it gonna be feasible? Because we have the option to opt in or out of the fuel of, of the tax. And where it goes, they will not cut our state aid, we just wouldn't get, you know, additional money for state aid. But, but, and, uh, the road, the state aid money goes for how much is appropriated to how many state aid miles you have. So I went on the county website, and I'm, I have not finished, but it looks like we have a ton of counties that actually have a whole lot more mileage than we do, and it's something that we need to consider real careful. If it's gonna be a plus, or if it's gonna be a negative. And, uh, one of the question that came up at the count, uh, at the conference that it probably didn't get answered is this, and probably won't get. If we gonna donate into the state aid fund, why can't, uh, we have the counties they self keep five percent? And that way you can do not only state aid roads, but any other road that need doing. I think that came up. Half percent, yeah.
Of the one and a half percent.
Yeah, and that came up.
Once it gets in Jackson, you don't know if it's ever coming back.
It's gonna never come back, but also just a few things I want to make aware, I've been kind of following that, uh, the, um, Mississippi State Association Supervisors on Friday, they had a meeting. It's just a few things that we definitely need to look at, um, how, uh, Senate Bill twenty nine sixty eight, and talking about rural structures. They only giving seven to, uh, up to twenty percent value, twenty percent, twenty one percent is the least depreciation. So it's, it would definitely affect our taxes, uh, and it won't affect us, but with our new hires, they trying to, uh, help the peer system. So it's gonna change, that's something that we need to look at it. Uh, and one of the main things that need to look at is, uh, gonna negative impact the county is Senate Bill twenty nine ninety two that we definitely need to talk to our, uh, legislators about not passing. Because it's gonna put home stay from seventy five thousand to two hundred thousand, uh, uh, value. So that means anybody over sixty five, it's just about every home in Mississippi that's over will be tax exempt. And that's gonna cut the county taxes. But looking at this, just think about it, even with House Bill One, even with income tax elimination. Understand this, a cut is not a cut, a cut is a deception, it's putting it somewhere else. Just like right now, it's cutting two hundred million dollars out of the budget, eliminating income tax. Well, you cutting two hundred, uh, million out of the state budget, but guess what else? Somebody else got to be cut, some other budget's got to be cut to make up for that money to operate on. And if that bill passes, you gonna end up, yeah, it's gonna take a lot of people over sixty five out, but everybody under sixty five gonna end up paying double taxes to make up that. So that's one of the things that they had on there, um.
Excuse me, what, what did you say the number for all the houses?
Uh, Senate Bill twenty nine ninety two.
Go from seventy five thousand, how much?
It's seventy five thousand to two hundred thousand, well, it was seventy five hundred to twenty thousand. It's gonna go from seventy five thousand to two hundred thousand.
We're not gonna have, we're not gonna have much money later. Well, Dan Griffey said pretty good in the meeting we had the other day with legislators, it sounds like a shell game.
Yeah.
Cause you're, you're cutting that, but yet you're gonna use, increase a percent and a half over here for whatever. I mean, basically they taxed for the whole county, everything they purchased is gonna be taxed one and a half percent. So, and, and then, and then there's, and they're just, they're just taking money and moving it around, but I, I, I don't know.
I don't know, and it's, and, uh, so we was looking at a couple, uh, other thing with purchasing. There, uh, Senate Bill twenty eight thirty, they're trying to move it from five thousand to fifteen thousand without having, uh, uh, PO. Uh, uh, and we got another bill, we look at, um, Senate Bill, uh, twenty eight thirty two that they're, uh, trying to pass to make it legal, where you can post your, uh, meeting notice on your website. And be legally, uh, it can be legal because some of the rural counties does not have newspaper. So we can, can't just do certain counties, and they're just something that needs to be, you know, uh, think about it as a pass. And one of the, um, other things that I think we need to look at is, uh, keep in mind is Senate Bill twenty four thirty nine. And what they're trying to do, that's justice court. They're trying to move, uh, I think justice court cut off at thirty five hundred. They're trying to move it from thirty five hundred to five thousand dollars to be handled. Cause you know in justice court, anything over thirty five had to go to circuit. So they're trying to move that up fifteen hundred dollars, so that's on that. And, um, so, and I did come in and I, I heard it, and I did come in and I talked to the administrator the other day. And, um, one of the things that we talked about, and I harked on it when I was president, and I'm not just talking to the administrator, and that go, that's talking to all of us. I think communication is the key thing, and we talked about that. Uh, I heard Supervisor Gray asking about where we was, and we talked about that. I was asking her to be able to, um, email all of us, uh, when, when you got something going. Email all of us so we'll know where it was. My concern that I, I want to know where we was, I need to know where we at in March. I don't want to wait till June to know where we at, and I want to continue knowing that for month to month. And I will reiterate this, uh, I know something to get, it gets frustrating. But we all work here, and as our people who work for us, people under us, uh, for us at the table, it's important for us to disagree, be able to agree to disagree, and keep respect for each other. And it's important for us to be able to follow those rules that we put in part. Uh, when stuff is submitted, uh, we need to have it submitted properly. If you need a budget amendment, it need to be submitted before the meeting. That way we can move forward. If it's communication with any of us, it need to be communicated. And one thing I did bring up to, uh, Scott, and I think all of us agreed up on it. Anybody that goes for that administrator goes for the role management. If one supervisor has an idea of something that's going on, that you should be, uh, reporting it to every supervisor. So when we come to the table, that we need to vote on it, we need to know. And, uh, I, I don't, I don't like to do it, I don't do it on purpose. Uh, I did send an email, that was one of my, uh, constituents right there, Miss Adam. When she contacted me about the, uh, trash company, I immediately contacted Scott and had Scott to send an email to everybody, so they will be aware of us. And I mean, it don't matter if it's positive or negative, we need to follow what we put in place. And I think that'll make it a lot easier for everybody. So, you know, uh, I, I, I would just say to everybody else, kind of, you know, look at our world, look at what's going on around us. We in total turmoil. And what goes on up top, it always work its way down. But I still say, it is our responsibility to check ourselves and keep ourselves in order. I mean, I don't wanna, I'm not gonna say because of what somebody else is doing at the federal level, what they do at the state level gives meaning right to do it, and I'm not gonna do it to nobody else, and I'm not gonna take it from nobody else. So we need to make sure that we stay in order, because we got a responsibility for our people here. And I appreciate the, uh, working, uh, essence that we had together, and I hope we can continue in our year of glory, Mr. President.
Thanks, Mr. Gaines. Mr. Middleton.
Yeah, uh, a few things I want to talk about. First of all, I want to thank the Sheriff's Office and the Police Department, everybody who, who worked hard this weekend on Land Hunt. I didn't know what was going on, I went by my mom's house, and she lives in Dunkin' Park, and saw the presence, uh, you know. I, I went down Dunkin' Avenue, there's three game boards sitting on both roads, I'm like, what the heck's going on here? Anyway, um, you know, I took four kids and dropped them off in Dunkin' Park Sunday, they had to play tennis, you know. But I, I didn't have any fear because I knew y'all were out looking, I knew you were in the area. Um, I didn't tell the girls, my son was there, I told him what to watch for. But, uh, you know, uh, thank y'all for what you do, you know, Dunkin' Park is a, draws a lot of people in on the weekends, and it's just something we need to be careful with, all our parks, but, uh, you know, then where, where y'all caught him out there in Walmart, I mean, that brings up another conversation that I think needs to be dealt with, uh, between us and the city to try to clean that up, right? It's, we all know what's going on, and we got to be better. Uh, the road department again for taking care of Burke Road Bridge, uh, same song, different verse, whatever, same verse. It's over and over and over again, and I know those guys hate getting a phone call. Because when they come down there, it's cold, it's wet, and it's a mess, it's an absolute mess, and that bridge is floating, and people are trapped. So I'm glad to get where we are on this temporary bridge, hopefully get some relief, and they do see something, because we've been telling them for three years now, something's coming. Uh, with Atlas came earlier, I do appreciate them coming, uh, like I think Supervisor Gray said, it shouldn't happen in the beginning. Uh, not only Atlas, but any contractor, it goes back to these that are cutting our roads up, doing everything else. Those right of ways belong to Atlas County. And it's their responsibility to keep us in, in, in mind and to not slow down any projects going on in the county. You're talking about a contractor who's sitting out there, who's having to dig holes manually with nine guys a day because he doesn't know where lines are. That's just the math on it, you know? Um, in a closing, I want to congratulate the Cathedral Emerald Tide, who placed first in a national competition, in a, in a tick competition over the weekend. Brandy's daughters on that. And, uh, they, they won state, but to win first in the nation is pretty dang impressive.
Very proud of the girls.
She would teach them.
I would.
Hey, you do a lot of stuff, Rick.
But we do recognize a lot of teams here that win state championships, and I do think they deserve some recognition on behalf of the board.
Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Dean.
I don't have anything to add.
All right, Brandon.
I just want to say, uh, thinking back on what Wes said, very, very proud of these girls. Um, they won, not one, two state titles, which I don't know that has, has ever been done, and then went on to Disney. We rolled in late last night, so I felt like a little tired, but it was worth it. Um, the girls had, had worked very hard, but got to play very hard, so it was a, a win-win. They got to go enjoy some time in Disney, um, and, and then work hard at that competition. They represented matches Adams County and Mississippi very well.
Uh, work they done.
It's a great group of girls, and great coaches, by the way. Congratulations and, and hard work, uh, you couldn't do it without the coaches, we have great coaches, so I want to put that out there to them too. So, um, they put, they put in just as much work as the girls, so. Um, have a couple of things just to put on the minutes, uh, tax redemption settlement, I need a motion to spread that across the minutes for January.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Ms. Hudson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Out.
Any names, motion carries?
Uh, also have, um, the quarterly report from our regional mental health group. Uh, we were required to spread that across our minutes, uh, from receipt, so they submitted that for, um, October, November, and December of twenty twenty four. Need to have that spread across the minutes.
Any motion? So invited to second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any names, motion carries?
Um, we had a request from the board to go back and, you know, look for the opioid funds to see how much of the funds we've received. Um, turns out we had received some back in twenty two, twenty three, and twenty four. I sent a report to the board showing y'all collectively what we had received in the opioid monies. Um, at that point, we did realize that we needed to have two transfers done. Um, we needed to have, there were still thirty six thousand, six hundred eighty one dollars and eighty two cents of opioid funds sitting in General County, and we needed to have that, uh, transferred or immediate approval to O two seven, O O O three seventy eight. And also we found a misposting where some opioid monies were put in O forty four. Um, so need to have the nine thousand, six hundred and sixty six dollars and eighty three cents that was misposted to O forty four. It needs to be transferred into the opioid, um, of O twenty seven, and you should have brought it for that.
All right, any motion? Moved by Mr. Middleton. Second by Ms. Hudson.
Discussion.
Discussion.
So, on, on, on those funds, um, do, was it a misposting? Uh, did the county actually use it? So in the opioid funds, I know some of it going to somebody else, but can it be used for General County? Can it be used for, uh, different things? So I, that's what I was kind of wondering, I know some of it going back. Uh, so you gonna put it all in one fund, and I know we gonna, of course, ask for some, and some of that. I think Scott mentioned, uh, that some of it might be used to catch up different things. And, uh, so my question is, so do it need to go back into one fund so we can do it before you finally back out? Uh, can you keep the record of where it is?
Right, and that, this is really bookkeeping only, it's just to make sure that if we, we have it all in O twenty seven, we can track it much easier. And so we're just, it, it all gets deposited by, so the opioid companies just deposit it into the general fund, and we're just trying to transfer it over into the opioid fund so that everything's in one fund and we can track it easier for us.
Yeah, I, okay, so I, that's, that's all I was kind of asking, so, you know, make sure that we have receipts for it. So if there's some of it's gonna be used for the county, was it necessary to transfer it back? And put it in there and then transfer it because you have receipts for it, that's all. So, cause we definitely need to keep up with how much and how we distribute it.
For sure.
Okay.
And this, this just allows us to keep it clean. This, this just allows us to keep it clean so that it's all, either all in one fund.
Okay.
And how much, what's the total gonna be in the fund?
Uh, it looks like a hundred and forty four thousand and some change, I believe is what we have received to date. And I know that at least we, um, the board got approval for you to sign all, I think it was an E signature for Kroger. So I know that that's the one that's still out there too. Um, to my knowledge, I don't think we have any other ones that we have had, uh, processed through the opioid settlement fund or excuse me, the opioid set of settlement group. I think that's the only one that we still have outstanding that we haven't.
All in favor? Any names, most curious?
Um, have one other transfer, um, the board had approved for ours unity reimbursements to come via ACH. And those are deposited, um, into, um, looks like we need to have it transferred from five oh one, oh, 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 three seventy three into the general fund of oh, oh, one, oh, 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 three seventy three.
All right, any motion? Miss Hudson, second by Mr. Middleton, any discussion?
Do them now?
Oh, I'm sorry, eighty thousand, oh, eighty nine, and forty seven cents.
Okay, uh, any more discussion? All in favor? Any names, most curious?
And Ricky, you had inquired about that city payment, I shot you a text, let me know if that's not the correct one or what into it, um, that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Clover?
Yeah, we did our C L E, our, our six months and there's a couple of changes that were talked about or suggested that we do for our handbook, one of them is if there's an employee that's, uh, appointed by the county, there's a grievance policy that, in addition to our grievance policy, that if they disagree with the termination or adverse informed action, they have a, uh, some sort of due process in place for them to do it. What I basically said is if this board would make this normal decision, if employee disagrees with that, they'd be able to file a grievance with the district board. They would say this is the stuff that I think is, needs, the board needs to consider, board can consider what they want in front of the decision, in front of the decision. It's just something that would help for litigation purposes for due process, uh, so that's one of the changes. Another change. This would add some due process protections for employees that are appointed to the, by the board. Currently they don't have a appeals process other than to go straight to the circuit court. This would add in a form for them to do it, it helps us litigate, you know, our appeal later on. Basically, they could say, we appeal, we want you to consider this, stuff that they don't tell you to consider is not considered by the board. We can't come back out, out after that, so that's, that's the advantage of doing it. The second thing is there's an ADA form that we can adopt. This is the, currently in our policy is you just contact somebody, contact HR, contact your department head and ask for accommodations. This makes it more, you know, specific, this is the things that I want and, and so forth. And I think it would be helpful to do it and so that's my salt in our meeting and as we did. And then this came up, employees can't be participants in our tax sales. And so this just adds a provision in the handbook that says employees may not participate in tax sales. Already contacted and let our tax collector know that as well, but employees can't be vendors of the, of the county. So that's, this is the three things that I wanted to update for our handbook.
So, Mr. President, let me ask you a question. So, to put a policy in place to say the employees can't be, so we had employees doing that?
It came up.
Okay.
And I've already discussed, and the good news is no one wanna file it or anything. I talked to the Ethics Commissioner, they said this does come up, comes up all the time. They also said, well, it's in our board, or in our conference, you gotta have that in your policy, that way people know that. And it's, it doesn't just include tax sales, it also says you can't really be a vendor with the county except for your employment contract, which you can't do.
They don't know that?
Now they know it, and, well, if this board adopts that policy, they'll have it in black and white, there's no excuse for it, so. If the board's okay with those things, we can move to do it.
I'm gonna, uh, follow the, uh, law, uh, attorney's recommendations for the change for the handbook.
Motion by Mr. Gaines. Second. Second by Mr. Middleton, any discussion? All in favor? Any names, most curious?
Yeah, that's it.
All right, Mr. Washington.
Oh, that, the public hearing for that portion of Little Woodville Road, two things. I'd asked George to take a gander at it to say, make, just confirm from an engineer on our side to say, that's okay, we're not using that portion of the, of the Lower Woodville Road, it's a point seven two acre excess, it looks like. Just wanna get his confirmation, we don't need any of that, and he said he could go out there and do it.
That, that's the same ethic, gravel?
Yeah, that's right, and, and we have to have a public hearing on it and advertise a few times. Have the public hearing in the middle of March, we are not giving that property to anybody, we're just saying we don't need it and it goes to whoever the owner is on that.
All right, Ms. Washington?
Previously at the previous, previous board meeting, I had asked for budget amendment, um, for the, um, special projects allocation. Uh, I have not formally asked for permission to create the department zero, zero, one, seven hundred, which is in General County. So I just need permission to do so.
Moved by Mr. Gray?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor? Any names, most curious?
I did just, uh, request for, um, personnel issues or concerning personnel.
Excellent, exactly, second. All right, um, come to me. Um, let's see what I got here.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
When are we gonna deal with the judges?
We're gonna hand her a close determination to see whether it qualifies or not first.
Thank you. Okay, so that, that's all this is for that, I don't have anything else. I thought that, did, didn't you mention this a minute ago? No, okay, that was something different, okay. Um, okay. Adams County Coalition for Children and Youth, uh, Trucks on the Glove sponsorship form. I, I, have, have we ever done anything with this before?
They donated trucks last time down there.
We, I don't think we can really do anything because it's not, I'll hand it to Scott and he can look at it, I don't think we can do anything because I don't think it's in our list.
They, they donated.
They, they don't really took a truck down there to. Do we need to give him permission to do that if you wanna do it again?
Yeah, you can find that it, this is, advertises the good possibilities of the county and so forth.
Okay, so, what, basically we're gonna give him permission to do that?
Yeah, under that advertisement.
Okay.
I, I'll make the motion to give him permission to take the truck under the advertising status.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Gaines.
And we had that last, we talked about that historical thing, just sent an email?
What date?
Date is on April twelfth.
Motion by Mr. Gaines, need a second. Second by Mr. Middleton, any discussion? All in favor? Any names, most curious? Okay, uh, Scott, you looked over the Adams County Confidential Emergency Management Plan, that, uh,
Yeah, last meeting, as I told you, there's a giant, I, I have seen it before, been through it before, I don't know what changes or whatever have been done last meeting, if you remember Brad brought that.
You haven't seen it?
He dropped it off.
I have seen it before, I haven't seen it recently, probably two, twenty twenties last time.
So you haven't seen the new changes that he proposed?
I've not.
Well, maybe you need to, uh, get it and look over it.
No, I think that, I think he needs, he needs to give us his look, hey, it doesn't sound like he's done it. We cleared all that, yeah, we, we cleared all that other stuff out, didn't we? Okay, um. Scott, we've been having a lot of problems and I don't know if you know about Rockwood Gas Plant down in Kingston? Those people are.
Yeah, it's not gas, don't have no gas.
Shooting up everything, people almost catching houses on firelight and pilots and stuff, it's, uh,
What's going on?
That company that, somebody, remember David Carter was here, that company come in, they were gonna put that tank and all on Robert Day's place and all for the butane or the gas out there in the Kingston area, they're having, residents having some issues.
Uh, I, it was me yesterday, but for the first time I've heard something about it, and it's called me about that, but I just wish they had taken that money and put everybody on electric then. That, this has been a nightmare, um, but anyway, I'll, I'll call them again and see if they can get somebody out there to, to work on that. Um, I have a couple of things from close determination, but, and the only other thing I want, uh, uh, so I don't think I've talked to y'all about uh, Washington DC at all, um, met some interesting folks up there. Uh, we need to do everything we wanted to do, um, I think there was a threat on the president's life and they changed, changed everything about the inauguration. Um, uh, even when they had an event for people to go into, they, sixty thousand people lined up to go in. A twenty thousand person arena, and when they got to the door, they made the ladies throw their purses away. Hey, that's how bad a threat it probably was, even clear handbags were not allowed in, so it was a, it was very tight security in, in Washington DC, I don't know how it's gonna be when we go up there and, uh, but, uh, I, I did meet a lot of people that I wanted to meet, Sarah Huckabee Sanders, uh, for one. Uh, Marjorie Taylor Greene and, uh, Katie Britt from Alabama, it was really a good, good meet. Um, I need, I, I think, believe I need to go, I would like to go to the conference with y'all in Washington. Um, so I think, I guess I need board approval too. Okay.
Get your hotel or whatever.
All right, um, all right, uh, I guess I need a, um, motion.
But close.
Oh, yes.
Some, some move.